I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting. Today is Monday, November 12th, and we're in the community center. Thanks everyone for coming. The council is all present. We have approval of minutes for October 9th and November 7th, the special council meeting. Is there any objection to approving the minutes? Hearing none, the meetings are, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, I call the public hearing on proposed amendment to the University Heights One University Place Urban Renewal Area. Anyone who would like to speak, please step up to the microphone. And don't speak for any longer than five minutes. Hopefully you can say everything you want in five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak tonight? Okay.
Not about this topic.
Well, we have another public input.
Later.
A little later, but this, thank you for clarifying, this is just for the public hearing. Okay, I close the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution 1851 declaring necessity in establishing an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approving urban renewal plan amendment for the University Heights One University Place Urban Renewal Area. Is there a motion?
Move adoption.
Motion by Virginia.
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion.
I'd like to start by pointing out that back in the first quarter of this, of this year, I brought to council's attention that we had an issue with respect to the budgeting that we thought we had from the 5% that the city receives from the TIF arrangement with Maxwell. We thought that the city was getting 100% of that 5%, and my research, which was later confirmed and validated by the action that we're taking tonight, says that we're not. And so the question is if we weren't, if we are not receiving 100% of the 5% that we thought we were receiving, then what are, what does that mean? And basically what it means, and I want to share this very clearly tonight with the public and with the council, is that it means that education is drawing from some amount or portion that we thought we were getting. So we're sharing with education, our schools, our teachers, our students, and the staff that support our education system in Johnson County. We're also supporting other county services that we draw from. We have a number of them, such as conservation efforts throughout the county of Johnson County. We've got mental health initiatives that are being funded by money that goes to the county. And we've got Johnson County Affordable Housing Budget Line Item Commitments from the county that because of this money that we are sharing with these entities, they're able to continue with their missions. So my, my biggest concern is that by changing the designation of, of sharing with these other institutions and taking 100% of the city is for a really nominal amount of money, and two, we're really shortchanging social programs that need our support and every dollar that we can give in their direction. Affordable housing, mental health, conservation, schools. Because just remember that the bond initiative we spent on the schools not too long ago was just for physical infrastructure. It had nothing to do with salaries for teachers, salaries for student programs, or any other type of programming needs that schools need. So by taking action in favor, by voting yes tonight, councilors are saying, we don't care about the county that we live in. We don't care about doing our fair share in contributing some of the amounts that otherwise we've been contributing for the last, what, three years that we've been on this TIF giveaway. So my concern is that if we vote yes tonight, we are closing and saying no to our schools, to our county facilities, to our county institutions. And the only ones that win here are really the attorneys, all of whom, one of which is asking for a $5,000 contract agreement tonight to make this transfer happen. So I'd like for this council to reconsider, or to explain and share your thoughts with the public why it's okay to say no to these really good, worthy, competing priorities in the county level that support us. Because I just, I'm just as comfortable taking the money that we're drawing down now, making the best use of it and moving forward.
Steve, would you talk about contacting the county and the school board?
Yeah, so the, the county and the school board for Iowa code were notified of a meeting to come and hear and talk about the proposed amendment to the TIF district that's before the council tonight. That meeting, those meeting notices were sent, the meeting was, was held, and no one appeared by, by, from the school district or from the county. And the, the letter that gave them notice of that meeting also invited them to provide written comment if they weren't able to, or wanted to make written comment in addition to coming, and no written comment was received either.
I did speak to over the phone, well, over the phone with Lisi Green Douglas and in person with Rod Sullivan and the late Kurt Fries about this topic, and they all three said that if we had an opportunity to get funding for affordable housing in University Heights, that we should take it.
But this is getting re-designated for streets and sidewalks tonight as well. It's moving away from.
No, that's how we claim the money, but the idea here is still to use it for affordable housing.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
So I just want to clarify, what we've heard is that tonight, really, the vote is for affordable housing, use, usage of the TIF, and, and not streets and sidewalks, which is what we said at the last one or two last meetings. So I, I'm confused, clearly.
I feel like we've been over that a little bit, but Steve, if you want to clarify that for Sylvia one more time, maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure, so there's, excuse me, there are certain restrictions that, for which the funding can be used, and, and I guess I'd say two things. One is, what I've heard council members say in, in public meetings is that if, if there's an opportunity to allocate some of these dollars for certain city projects that do not have anything to do with affordable housing, that that would free up other dollars that could be used toward affordable housing. The other thing is, as the council moves forward and as other funding is available from some other things around the agenda tonight, like the Olive Court properties and, and some other things that may come in the future, the council may build more of a, of an affordable housing program. I think, I don't know how that might take shape, there's been some discussion about that. And at that point, the council might take further action to amend this district again to include some areas that would, would encompass that kind of affordable housing proposal. The specifics of it don't exist now, so you can't really allocate funds to it or amend your plan with that in mind. But what I've heard the council say is, let's allocate dollars that we know we can commit to a project and, and use dollars that we would otherwise allocate to that project to an affordable housing use.
Okay, there's a motion and second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Casada?
No.
Herbl?
Aye.
Maher?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Dottie, you said no?
I said no.
She said no.
Three, two, carry.
Okay, now we have consideration of Resolution 1852 authorizing internal advance of funds for urban renewal project. Steve, do you want to clarify just a little bit?
Sure.
That's different language.
Yep, so what this relates to is the, it's, it's an indebtedness, so that basically the council borrows it from itself, or the city borrows from itself, as I just said about allocating funds from one purpose to another. Then, then alloc, then accessing the TIF dollars permits the city to pay itself back. That's the way that the, the TIF law works, and that's why it's worded this way.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion adoption.
Okay, motion by Virginia, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion.
I'm concerned about this resolution regarding an internal advance because it's unclear to me from our financials whether or not the mental health distribution that we agreed to back in April or May of this year has been segregated and removed from the funding that this council majority is moving into for street sidewalks, affordable housing. So I need to, I need to get direction, Steve, before we vote on, that we have removed and segregated our 2018 contributions as a council to the, to the mental health facility that the county requested our assistance with early on this year.
I don't think I can provide any guidance on that. I don't, I mean, I don't really look at the budget line items or where those things stand. I can't speak to that.
What is the impact of this language on that, on those dollars, is really what it boils down to?
I can't, I don't know. I mean, I can't speak to that. I don't think it, I don't think it impacts it at all. I don't know why it would, but.
Because it's not a streets and sidewalks project. But I think if we were to take a timeline and say that we voted and segregated no more than 5,000 for the Mental Health Crisis Center back in April or May, and the action that we're taking tonight is clearly for any leftover or residual sums, that's what it attaches to, plus any sums going forward.
I'm not sure I follow you about leftover residual funds.
Well, we have, we have a certain amount, X, right? Let's just say 100 bucks, and we are withdrawing 50 bucks from that account for mental health. So what I want to make sure is that Resolution 1852 is only picking up 50 dollars and not the money that was intended to be used for the mental health facilities.
Again, I don't know that I'm the person to answer that. I didn't think that there were, that any.
Did the TIF attorney give you any guidance, like on, on the, on any, anything on this amount? I mean, once we vote, once the majority council votes on this, I, I need to make sure that we're able to make a distribution to our commitment to the mental health facility.
Yeah, and that, I can't speak to that, I don't know.
Well, we made, we made a commitment earlier.
We voted on it as a council.
This year and voted to support the, the new mental health center.
With dollars, is.
Yeah, with dollars.
Right. So I'm just worried about the distribution being locked into this new designated function of this.
Well, I'm concerned about streets and sidewalks, which are falling apart and should be a primary concern before any other bells and whistles. And so my worry is here, we're beginning to siphon away money for the integrity of the city, not just for isolated affordable housing. So I can just see it being, you know, ciphered. And I'm worried about our commitment to the city and maintaining streets and sidewalks. Because I think that's a basic structure that we all benefit from, not just an isolated affordable housing venue.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Maher?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Casada?
No.
Herbl?
Aye.
Three, two, carry.
Okay, consideration of Resolution Number 1853 authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with John Danos and Dorsey and Whitney for consulting on financial matters related to urban renewal plan amendment for the, with consulting not to exceed $5,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Virginia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Steve, do you want to just review? I know you spoke to.
Sure, this is just, I mean, Dorsey and Whitney's been the city's municipal finance or bond counsel for various projects over the years, and this is, this engagement concerns the two resolutions that the council just adopted with respect to amending the urban renewal plan or TIF area, and, and then authorizing this internal advance or internal loan. That's, that's what this relates to.
Any discussion?
I think Dorsey and Whitney's getting a good, good chunk of money here. It's unfortunate that we're moving in this direction because the ones who are losing are county infrastructure programming, education programming, and our students.
Do we have to keep paying them every year to claim the money thereafter?
No, 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 this is, this, so like if you don't change it again, you won't pay them again.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Herbl?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Casada?
No.
Four, one, carry.
Okay, and then we have consideration of Resolution 1854 approving the estimated TIF revenues for the One University Place development anticipated for the city's fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, with appropriating approximately $530,676 to the developer as economic development tax increment payments and appropriating approximately $27,930 to the City of University Heights from revenues received from the Johnson County treasure attributed to the taxable valuation of the OUP property. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Virginia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Steve, you want to do a quick review?
Sure, so this, this also relates to TIF, obviously, but it's kind of the, totally separate from what you just did. This, this is the annual appropriation resolution that the council is required to consider every year with regard to the TIF development agreement entered into in August of 2015 by the city and, and the developer of OUP. And so this was approved, I mean, the, the TIF development agreement was approved in 2015. The numbers were, and percentages were discussed then. The development agreement provides for annual appropriation, and that's what this is, is the, the yearly appropriation. The other thing I would, I would make clear is that the, that this is a rebate TIF, so funds are, are rebated to the developer annually based on the council's vote, but those, those rebates are, are only from tax monies that are paid from this development.
Is this, what number appropriation is this? This isn't the first year we've done this, correct?
It's not the first year, so we pay taxes a year behind. This was the first, the last fiscal year, I think was the first fiscal year that there was any sort of a payment made.
It was a partial payment?
Yeah, and that was roughly $50,000, give or take. Last year about this time, the council appropriated a significantly greater sum, it was 480, roughly $1,000. That has, that payment hasn't been made because those taxes haven't yet been collected. So this is the third appropriation vote, but.
And this number is higher than 480 because the valuations are higher?
Yes. Yeah, there's, I circulated with the legal report, a worksheet, that the developer is required under the agreement to submit with all the, the numbers, and then those are checked by the, the auditor's office and looked at, and then they were revised to some extent, and, yeah, so it's based on the assessed value.
Roll call vote.
Wait, is there a discussion?
There was a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
What?
Is there a discussion?
Well, there was, discussion began by Virginia.
Virginia, and then, okay, perfect.
Do you have some more?
I do, but I have questions that I need information from the development team to answer before I can vote on this.
Okay.
Are they available for being asked a couple of questions on the appropriation?
Well, Steve can answer too.
All right.
But they are here.
Let's try it, Steve. Steve, can you tell me how many efforts or attempts you made to bring a coffee shop amenity into the commercial space in this past calendar year?
Yeah, I'm not, that's not a question I can answer.
That's right. So that, those are kind of like the questions I'm asking. So it'd be good to hear from Jeff Maxwell or Kevin Monson, who are partners in this business transaction on, on, you know, how, how many attempts were made in calendar year 2018 to obtain a coffee shop. Number two, we have a number of nonprofits that are buying into the south building, and I'm really concerned about that because we need taxation, we need a tax base at some point, once the TIF lifts. So I'd like to know a little bit more about the nonprofits that are buying into the north building, because if they're nonprofits, they're not going to be paying taxes. So I'm pretty concerned about that.
Is Oaknoll a nonprofit? No, we've already handled that in the developers' agreement, that everybody pays property taxes.
For a window of time. After that window lifts.
Is Oaknoll actually a nonprofit?
Steve, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so Oaknoll, as it's presently organized, is not a nonprofit for purposes of not paying property taxes. Oaknoll would pay property taxes.
They're a charitable contribution, they're a charitable organization.
I don't know if that they are. I'm not going to say that they're not, but I know that they pay property taxes. They're, 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 they would pay property taxes wherever they own property. They pay property taxes on the property they own in Iowa City on George Street. So they're, whatever their tax status is, does not exempt them from the payment of property.
I'd rather hear that from the developer. They're more intimately familiar with those details, because we need some assurances that we're going to be able to collect as a community some taxes later on.
Oaknoll does pay taxes, and will be paying taxes on property wherever they buy property.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then.
We are making continued efforts to get a coffee shop. It's been on our list forever. We think we're close, but there's no firm proposal yet.
Can you tell us what type of efforts you're making to advertise for that need on behalf of the community?
Well, we have a, one of the top commercial real estate agencies working on it continuously, and they have been since day one. And they are doing everything in their powers to make that happen. So we have great faith in their services, and hopefully they'll come home for us.
Okay. Last question. Is it, is it still your position that no affordable housing contribution is due from this project complex?
That's a legal question I cannot answer you. I'm sorry, it's not for me to answer.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We'll have roll call vote.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Casada?
Because there is no firm commitment on affordable housing contribution to the county, I can't support this allocation for this year.
Casada, no?
That's correct.
Herbl?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Five, four, one, carry.
Okay, and we have consideration of Resolution Number 1855 approving and directing filing of urban renewal report with the Iowa Department of Management related to the OUP tax increment financing development agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Le, uh, Virginia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Steve, do you want to comment?
Sure, this is just a report on the council's prior appropriation and, and the council's distribution of taxes for the tax year 2017, 2018 that were paid, 2018, were paid 2017, 2018, excuse me. So this is just a report, it's nothing new, it's just telling the Department of Management this is what we did by prior resolution.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Casada?
No.
Herbl?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Four, one, carry.
Okay, now we'll move to public input. Now, this is regular public input, and we want, a council and I want to hear from everyone, but we have a pretty full agenda. I'm limiting everyone to five minutes or less, I have a timer. And so if you need a little more time and it's something new, you can let me know, but please try to keep it at five minutes or less. And I have Jace Humphrey signed to speak. Hi, Jace.
Hi. Jace Humphrey, 27, Prospect Place. It's nice to know after my several month hiatus from city council meetings that nothing appears to have changed a whole lot. My main reason for being here tonight is because if you have read Chief Peterson's report, I'm one of the major complainers with the problems with the university's traffic guards during game days. This past Saturday, they refused to allow my son's girlfriend access to my neighborhood, forced her to go the other direction. When I walked from my house to the intersection of Sunset and Melrose, I was threatened to be arrested for disorderly conduct by the Marion cop who was standing there. And after finally getting her let through, was told that I was the problem, not a solution. I have an extreme problem with the fact that unlike those who come into our neighborhood seven times a year, I live here 365 days a year. I should not be denied access to my home. I should not be denied access to have people come to my home simply because there's a home football game. This is the third time this season alone that I've had an issue getting to my house. There are two arterial streets that will allow you to my house. One is Sunset, coming down grand, the other would be Golf U at Melrose. One of which is almost impossible to get to during a game day. If they continue to block off my ability to get across Melrose at Sunset, I basically can't get home. The next football game happens to appear on a Friday during the day. I have a normal work schedule, my wife has a normal work schedule. If this problem isn't rectified, I'm liable to run over a traffic guard. Thought I would bring it to your attention. This is not the first time this has occurred. It has happened in years past, and after coming or talking to the chief, he's been able to fix it. And I know Nate has tried to reach out to the University of Iowa and has gotten nowhere. I need the council to either help Nate get this done, or somebody to start a bail jar for me.
Thank you, Jace. I have JP signed up to speak. Let me cancel that.
All right, good evening. Juan Pablo Arcad at 416 Ridgeview Avenue. So I'm here to talk about ordinance 235. It's been a few months, this is July, August, September, October, now we're in November. And I wanted to talk again, looks like we have a new version that was circulating that has removed some of the protections of the original. That was, the original coming from the ACLU with support from the NAACP and LULAC. And I think any step in the right direction is a positive step, and I think this new version still moves in the right direction, but I think it's a small step in the right direction, not a strong firm step in the right direction like the original version was. And just to get back to, I think the key thing that's missing, there's a couple of things, but the one thing I wanted to talk about is pretextual stops. And I think this is something that can be misunderstood, so I think it's good to talk about it and think about it. There's two ways in which profiling can happen. And again, we're not saying it's happening here, we know it happens in other parts of the country. I have not experienced it here, I have experienced it elsewhere. But one way is when there's enforcement actions that are solely based on someone's race, ethnicity, or another protected class, and there's no crime committed, there's no, sometimes people are stopped, there's searched, there's no charges of any kind. That's covered by the new version still. The other kind is when people get pulled over for some typically innocuous law, like maybe a taillight is off, but with the purpose of actually doing a search or looking for something else. And that's what we call a pretextual stop. And how do we know it happens? We don't know if it's happening here, because we don't have data. But for example, there's a Stanford study of North Carolina stops, where they found that African Americans and Hispanics were much more likely to get searched, but those searches were much less likely to turn something out when compared to the searches of white motorists. And what you see there is basically an unequal enforcement of the law. So you have the same laws, they get enforced in some cases, they don't get enforced in other cases. And typically the reason is this pretextual stops. You're stopping someone not because of the official reason you're stopping them, but because you want to investigate something else. And the part that's been removed, cover that, cover that, and if, for example, with a data collection, which is a very positive step, and that's still there, with a data collection, if you find out that there's, say, a similar pattern to North Carolina, where, say, we're searching some groups of motorists more, but we find less things, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that's illegal to have that kind of pattern. Because the first part says you can't take into consideration race, ethnicity, or any of these other protected classes. With the, but then it has except, an except clause. And the except clause says unless there's a behavior that, that's ongoing. So basically, if there's any kind of law, any kind of. if there's any kind of law, any kind of violation, that's a way of going through. So in other states, there was a recent case in Wisconsin where somebody had an air freshener hanging, and that was enough of a cost to stop someone and search them. And that's what we want to avoid, and we want to cover both kinds of profiling that might happen. That's the reason why that's there. It does not, one thing I want to clarify, it does not in the text in any way prohibit police from investigating based on probable cause after they stop someone. That's not prohibited in any way by the original text. Okay? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council?
I would like to submit a letter from the ACLU. Actually, you know what? I'll just submit it through. Never mind.
Okay.
I think council is well aware of what the issues are at this point.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Going, going, gone. Okay, thank you. Our next, we're going to try to move quickly along here so that we can get, there's a lot of people that are here for a lot of things.
Can we get ordinance 0235 quickly? I think we just need some direction on what we're going to do with that language.
I have people here that want to speak on many things, and I want to keep moving on. Does the council want to move on with the agenda as is?
Yes, please.
Do you, Virginia, want to move on with the-
Yeah, thank you.
Do you, Dottie? Yes?
Well, I'd like to, well, first of all, I just would like to really move ordinance 235 way at the bottom because I think it's-
Well, we'll see how it is when we keep moving along. Okay, so we're going to go to streets and sidewalks right now. And, Dottie, consideration of the updated Triangle Park plans.
Right. I believe the council has had an opportunity to review-
Dottie, could you pull the microphone in? I'm sorry, this microphone, you have to speak really close. Could you put it down for, so it's in front of her?
No, that's okay.
You have to pull this, the top of it down.
Oh, this down, okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, great. Thank you.
The council has had an opportunity to review the most recent Triangle Park plan that I submitted together with the able help of Jim Glasgow. So I am asking for a-
Sorry, are you motioning?
Yeah, I would like to move to approve this version of the Triangle Park.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Dottie and a second by Lisa. Okay, further discussion?
I think it looks very nice.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, the second issue is one of the repair of portions of the sidewalk to be paid by individual citizens. And it's been brought to my attention that there is some concern about whether these are being assessed and designated without, how should I say? It appears to be fairly arbitrary without a designated criteria. And so I am trying to answer the question that was posed to me. And I spoke with our attorney about that, and he indicated that there is a city ordinance that has been designated to that effect, that we review the city in portions, and every few years, we circle around to a different section and assess them for the street repair, excuse me, sidewalk repair. This is also controlled by a state code policy that gives us the opportunity to make our own decisions as a city. So in the past, this has been the decision of the council. So the council is able to revisit this and make a different determination if it wishes. There are some streets in University Heights that have sidewalks, and there are others that do not. And so, you know, one could argue that that's fairly arbitrary and maybe unfair because of the cost to those persons that have sidewalks. I know when I purchased my house, I didn't even think about whether there was a sidewalk there. I mean, I think it's probably the last thing that you might think about in terms of cost or upkeep. So it's a council decision. It can be reversed and changed.
Is there a motion?
So I am uncertain. Does anybody have a suggestion or want to address it, or should we look into it further, or?
Yeah, when I went and looked at the markings that had been done for this round, I didn't feel that I could stand by telling homeowners to make the repairs that, some of the repairs that I saw. Some of them were legitimate. I don't want to necessarily guess at a percentage of what I thought really needed to be done and what I thought was extraneous. But we last did a round of sidewalk repair in this quadrant of town four years ago, if my memory serves. And at that time, it had been at least, well, I guess I can't say at least, but somewhere in the range of 10 years since it had been done before that. And so at that 10-year point, we caught something like 50 properties, and I'm sorry, I don't have exact numbers. So it would be expected that we would catch fewer than 50 properties four years later, given that it had been less than half the time for the sidewalks to deteriorate, and we caught over 70 properties. And so I feel like the numbers right there show that the standards applied this round were probably overly stringent. And I just, it seems really wasteful to me to be cutting out a lot of concrete and replacing it when I just don't think it needs to be replaced.
Well, Josiah, are you responsible for designating the cycle of, you know, repairs? Have you, did you identify the sections of the city and then go around and mark them, or who did that?
Yep, you want to just speak up here?
The cycle, the cycle was laid out.
You'll have to speak more into the microphone?
The cycle was laid out probably six years ago, when the-
It was in 2014.
2014?
Yep. I do remember that because-
When we did our first, first review of the section. So at that point, it was, the plan was to catch everybody up over three years and then implement a rotating schedule every, every two years. So every six years thereafter, you'd be inspected.
So is the city already plotted on that cycle so that people will know when they're being, going to be asked, or searched, or whatever?
Yeah, that schedule's like posted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So when will we reach the culmination of that particular, this cycle?
We did the southeast. That's the one that got done this time, as Virginia mentioned. So in two years from now, we'll do the next third, is the plan. And then two years after that, so four years from now, we'll do that final third.
So those people-
And then two years after that, you'd come back to the southeast again. So from this point moving forward, the plan identified was to inspect each third every, once every six years.
Okay, so we would have to wait another 12 years in order to be fair with everybody, with every property?
We've had one round, right, where we did all three parts of the city.
All three have been done once.
And now we're starting over. So this is the first one of the second time around.
Correct.
So this would have been the time to make a change.
Okay.
If the city were going to pay for these repairs, what kind of expense would that be? Do you have a sense, now that we've done the first round, you know, going forward? Because I'm hearing Dottie talk about, you know, making a good point, I think, about somewhat arbitrary, you know, who's paying for these. I know that's somewhat common, but do you have a sense of that?
I don't. I can definitely go back and get all the costs from-
The first round's probably going to be more expensive than the future. We've probably done some deferred maintenance in terms of the first, the first way around. Would that be correct?
For the sidewalk inspections?
Well, that's what we would have expected, but that's not really how it turned out.
I think it just depends on the condition of the weather and the wear and tear on the sidewalk. It's hard to find a predictable pattern.
Well, in some sidewalks are more heavily trafficked, like on Cozier.
So, so what we've always said when we do the inspections in the letter is if you have a problem with the, with the way it's been marked, or you think it's wrong, you know, notify us, and we'll come out and review it and see if it's been mismarked, or maybe this was applied incorrectly. There's a sheet of, you know, criteria. So you don't mark the panel unless it's got, it's broken into pieces, or it's got separations, you know, of a certain height. It's down to like, is it measured, you know, and, or is it ponding water? You know, does it tip the wrong way? And so it ponds water, and the winter, you know, that ponds water and ice is over. So we've had, I think, so far, we've had two people say, hey, we want to have this looked at again, and-
Well, I've had people talk to me, just so you know. And the attitude is, what's the point of saying anything? The city council's decided. I've heard that one. Part of the problem is, you know, I see a lot of things marked. They're not tripping hazards. I'm not sure, I mean, I know by the criteria, but I think our criteria are somewhat strange. If you look at what Iowa City has, they're a little, a little more precise, and they have more options for repair. But overall, like, there are some stretches of sidewalk where you can do these, you know, two panels and one panel, and you still have the overall problem of the whole sidewalk is tipped the wrong way.
There are trip hazards. And see, this, this is one of the issues where I think some of the money from one university place, some of the TIF money should be spent on our universal need for a safe sidewalk. I mean, there are other things that are nice, and when we're flush with money, that would be nice. But I think now we need to be practical. I just want to be sure that everybody is happy with this decision and this implementation because it's, we can change it. But I, you know, whether, I don't have a sidewalk because they couldn't put it in because I don't, we don't own the whole street. But there are many, I think, all the streets on the other side of Sunset are without sidewalks.
So would it be possible to reassess this round of markings, to go back and look for trip hazards only, and then find out what it would cost for the city to cover those instead of assessing them to homeowners?
I mean, it can be done.
Okay.
I have a concern over that because we did the west side of University Heights, and we made a lot of people pay out of pocket.
Mm-hmm. And we've done the whole town, and everybody paid out of pocket last round. So if we're going to make that change, this would be the appropriate time to make that change.
Well, we could do that, but also to do a catch-up for those who have, who were trip hazards in your files. I hope that, I'm assuming every, every property has a file, and if one, if we're going to be sponsoring the funding of a trip hazard in 2018, that we'll go back and refund.
No, we wouldn't go back and refund anybody because everybody was treated the same in the last round. So-
You mean the whole city got done?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we've done it three times.
And so this is a new round, and so it would be an appropriate time to make that change.
That would not be a, I think that would be fair. And that's, just to provide you all with additional information, we had the stewards on Oak Crest show up three years ago to this council, when maybe Mike Haberkamp, who is here, remembers, but he requested that his, his street is used by not members of his family, but it's the community and the community at large. And he wanted to see city council action moving in the direction where public works that were really public would be picked up for repairs by the city treasury and not by his pocketbook. And I, and I tend to not disagree at all with that. So I do move forward to further discussions on the TIF money reallocations for streets and sidewalks.
I guess I'm thinking about Marriott money. And I don't think that we probably have the funds to do all of the sidewalks right now, but just as, as we think about the Marriott money that's going to come in, replacing entire blocks of sidewalks is something we need to be thinking about. But anyway, I'm going to make a motion on my previous point that the southeast quadrant be reassessed for trip hazards only, and Josiah present what the cost for the city to cover that would be.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Josiah, you seem to want to say something.
So when you say-
What's a trip hazard?
A cost. Well, yeah, so, so an estimate based on past years, what we've seen for the city-administered project, is what you're asking for?
Yeah, but if you can-
Based on past years?
Except the city didn't do grinding in past years, correct?
Correct. We, the city did do grinding, like 14 years ago.
If the problem could be fixed with-
But if it, if it's theoretically been done, it hasn't been done, because there are trip hazards all over the city now. I mean, that's, that are there, that have not been remedied.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's some that exist, that sidewalks are old. They've been there a long time, so.
That's my point.
I'm, let's see.
Are you understanding the direction? Is that, you're getting clarity of the direction?
Yeah, so what do you mean by trip hazard? And what does that sort of look like to you, or?
To me, it's when, when you've got separations. And the spalding things, I don't think are a trip hazard personally, but-
Do you remember the woman who had that big bump on her forehead? I had to take her home and help her. And it had all the neighbors on Sunset Avenue. I think I sent you a picture. I think that's what they mean, like the two panels of concrete were-
Yeah, just the vertical deflection.
Yeah, the deflection. Okay, good. That's your word.
Well, we do have some things that I've noticed that they don't match the criteria, but I think, I think it's a hazard. Like, there's a panel on Melrose somewhere where there's a corner broken and kind of slanted down, but it's not marked because it's not on the, it's not on the paper.
It's not broken into three pieces. Yes, I mean, there's this sort of tug of war between like, you want to treat everybody fairly, so you come up with these criteria. And you try and get like, pretty darn exact, so people can say, yeah, we measured it. But then you run into this, on the other hand, which is, I don't agree with it. It's too exact. And it's, I did not mark them out this time. We've had somebody do them. He's done them the last three years. I did do it before that, and in the last rounds, 10 years before that. And it's, it's really tough to go out there and like, okay, what did I do here? And it's just, it's a lot of judgment calls. So I'm just saying, it is, it's kind of difficult, so.
That would be nice if we just did the city, you know, and did everything and did it right.
In addition, in addition to trip hazards, I think you mentioned like, you know, the water pooling and ice. Are there any others that you think are, I guess, top priority if we are going to take this approach to potentially cut out the big hazards, use city money? So we've talked about trip hazard. Are there, is there any other?
I mean, the drainage one seems pretty pertinent to me, like drainage. So on some of these older sidewalks, you'll see they're basically tipped like backwards. They kind of move this way. And so you get a, you'll get a stretch that's like tipped back into a yard, and the yard comes down. So when it rains, or if it snows and melts, it'll just hold water there for some period of time. So, you know, I guess it's a judgment call on what you guys want to, want to focus on.
So you're suggesting maybe the, that too?
Yeah. You know, the, part of this, I think, I think the intent was originally like, let's inspect sidewalks because when people go walking, they don't want to trip. They don't want a rough surface. I mean, there's a whole nother aspect, which is like, a lot of the sidewalks aren't technically ADA compliant because they've moved, you know, over the decades and things like that. But that's not something that, this was ever really intended to do, because then you get in the situation where you're like, you've just marked everything, you know? And that's what felt like was kind of unreasonable to lay on property owners all at one time, so.
Virginia, in terms of your motion, what are your thoughts in terms of the pooling water issue? water issue?
I think most of those can be alleviated somewhat with some work around the edges of the sidewalks and creating a channel through the median for the water to drain. I mean, I'm sure that's not the case for all of them. But again, it's hard for me to want to charge all that to the homeowner or the city.
No, I think I'm, I'm interested in the idea of figuring out what the high priorities are and then seeing if the city can afford, you know, to handle it. I guess I would just maybe add to the trip hazard, the issue of the water pooling, you know, the ice sitting there. That's the big concern that I have.
But there are places where there's like dirt that is mud, a good part gravel, then they just need to clean that off.
Sort of follow-up with Stan on rental houses for people to keep their sidewalks swept off because there's like a couple of rental houses that have gravel driveways and the gravel all spills out and nobody ever tells them how to pick it up and...
Well, outside of the motion, I guess, Josiah, if you are able to, if you see any that you think are troublesome when it comes to water retention, I wouldn't mind looking at them and seeing, you know, what we could do.
Yeah.
Because that's a concern.
So, I think on all our reports, we have the inspections broken down by, well, you know, let's say, we marked four panels on your property. Two were the vertical deflection. That's a type A or whatever. And two were type D, which is ponding. So, probably what I would do, if it's okay, the quickest thing would be to just go through everything, come up with a list of, you know, there's 50 panels of deflections or trip hazards. There's 50 of ponding. You know, panels are generally four by four and here's what we've seen for costs and here's an estimate of kind of what that would likely be.
Sounds good.
Does that sound?
Does that sound good for council? Is that what you're thinking, Dottie?
I'm just opening it up for discussion because I think it is a critical issue and we aren't addressing it when we are placing other things in priority, when this is really life-threatening in many instances, so...
So, he's going to bring back more information?
Yeah.
So, yeah, do we need to vote on this or do we need to amend?
So, we're with that direction. So, what, could you read it?
Reassess the marked or designated sidewalks for trip hazards only at this time, although there was discussion about...
See how close you have to be.
Thank you. And Josiah will present at the next meeting what it would cost.
I thought I heard a drainage hazards as well?
Well, that wasn't part of the original motion, so if we want to add it...
I'll, a motion to amend the motion. Is there any objection? Motion amended. Trip hazard and drainage hazards with reporting it next month. Thank you.
And sometimes the lawn pools water and then it runs onto the sidewalk, so...
Okay, could you reread that?
Reassess the marked sidewalks for trip hazards and drainage hazards. Josiah will present at the next meeting what that would cost.
Does that sound right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, you have enough direction, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And that's all for me and I think Josiah's up next.
Yeah, and Josiah is right here for the engineer's report.
Yeah, let's run down the list here. The fiber optic project Iowa City has, they are still going. They're still pulling cable and things through there. They're working their way down with restorations. As I noted in there, the majority of these restorations have been done after the seeding period. So, most likely, what you're going to see is they're going to have to come back next spring and refix it up and reseed it. And Iowa City is going to withhold retainage on that project until that time, which will be, which is the key to making sure they come back.
Did you see that the area that they restored at Triangle Park in the corner washed out?
Yeah, it's settling. Yeah, there's several areas around where they put handles in that are settled. So, we've got that noted.
Okay, thank you.
Gulf U storm intake. I'm meeting with the contractor to follow up on some additional flowable concrete placement. There's one last hole around that intake box that we excavated and cleaned out last month. There's two invoices on the warrants list for Action Sewer. One is that Gulf U intake that was completely full of debris to the top from that late August storm event. And I think the one on Highland was found later, several weeks after that, but it was probably related. That one was also plugged. Those were both vacuumed and cleaned out, as well as the pipes.
I have a question. What about our bus shelter on Sunset? Where is it, two years later?
Nothing new from last month. Still, they were planning on installing it next spring in April.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Mid-America Energy, the utility pole, pre-planning for the Melrose Streetscape project, reviewed that with Paul and we're setting up a meeting for later this week to again, meet with Mid-America and go over some of his comments and continue our correspondence.
Are you, Jim and Greg in that meeting?
They're not at the moment, but I think they're talking with Mid-America separately.
Because it hits them as well as Paul.
There was a note there about the sidewalk inspections we just talked about. So, as of now, we have 15 properties signed up for the city-administered project. Yeah. We have a curb ramp repair that is scheduled to take place, I think, later this week when the weather warms up. That's a follow-up from a Highland Drive tile project earlier in the year. And the pavement, there are some pavement markings to be done. Actually, I think, I think now it's just the crosswalk here down on Melrose that they skipped over. But again, they said they'll be back this week when the temperature warms up to finish that. And then on Olive Court, I have, got a draft set of plans that I've given to Virginia because she's been working with me on the restoration and the topsoil aspect on that. And then Dottie and Louise. I'm going to meet with you guys, get some feedback on some of those things and then have our full submittal after our meeting. I'm thinking maybe, maybe Monday, if possible, I'll try and meet with you guys Monday. We'll have a number of items. What's that?
Meet with who Monday?
I'd like to try and meet with you and Dottie and Louise to get some feedback before I finish the submittal so we can get it to the full council to get any comments back at the December 11th meeting before taking it from that step to finishing out the bid plans.
Any other questions for Josiah?
I was just saying, I think the asphalt patching looks really good that was done on Melrose in Osmer.
Yeah, that's right. That was completed too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josiah. We'll go on quickly through the mayor's report. We have a hotel project update. Jim stayed to talk about it. Thank you, Jim.
Well, I really, I really came here to try and convince you to do Triangle Park, but since we don't have to do that, I'll tell you, the hotel right now, we are, we're on track to start the underground detention basin this week. So, that's about a 40-foot wide, 300-foot-long underground storage facility that takes care of the stormwater on that site, plus takes up a lot of the stormwater from the neighborhood to the west. And since Josiah was talking about Mid-America, I'll just, we are following that and working with them. The crew that put the underground utilities in underneath the railroad tracks and across the bridge had a hell of a time getting it in. And they broke their bid a couple of times. They had to repull two or three different times. So, Mid-America is putting a bigger line than what they did. They put in three two-inch lines. Mid-America is trying to get a six-inch through there. So, we're, we are in discussions with them to see if there's a, either deeper, we don't really know what they hit under there. They were 35 feet deep when they hit something. And so, we're working with Mid-America and we may allow them to come in a little farther over on our property in order to avoid some of these issues if there are any. But we definitely want to get that done with them and get that, get that pole removed. So, the other thing that we're doing right now is Gray's Restaurant is kind of in full-blown planning mode with their restaurant equipment suppliers. And they haven't given, they haven't submitted us a final print on the restaurant yet, but he thinks two or three weeks they'll have that done. And our architects are telling us still that they will have their plans finalized in about two weeks. So, by the time I get done with the retention basin, I think we will be ready to pull the trigger on, on somebody starting a foundation. So, I'm hoping within 60 days we'll be going vertical. One other issue, I'll just tell you, since I'm doing a lot of sidewalk replacement myself right now, just to give you some budget numbers, if you go by square footage, $4 to $6 a square foot is a typical budget number for sidewalk replacement. So, like Josiah was saying, if you had one panel, which is four by four or 16 square foot, you're probably looking at $80 to $100 to replace one panel. So, just to give you a clue. Now, if you're doing the whole sidewalk and you're 100 feet long, well, you'll probably get a lower price, but you know, you're going to end up paying, paying by the square foot either way. So, but that's, that's about where we're running right now on sidewalk repairs. Other than that, I guess, any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions?
Just on the sidewalk thing, how much lower do you get if you do a long stretch of it? I mean, if you're talking four to six per square foot, are we talking three to five or?
You might, I think the lowest you'd ever get would be $3.50 probably. And that, the problem, the problem you have with sidewalk repairs, they have to pull the old sidewalk off, then they got to bring in rock, they got to compact it, and they got to form it and put it back in. So, the best thing probably for the city is to try and find one contractor that will give you an average square foot price and try and get everybody to sign up with that one guy. And I can, I can give you a couple of names if, or I'll give them to Josiah if he wants to, but...
Yeah, that's what, that's what we can do.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim, for coming. Now, I have a consider appointment to the zoning commission. Mary Panther has agreed to serve on the zoning commission and she's lived in the city for around 30 years. And she's a very, has volunteered for many activities. And I'd like you to consider that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Virginia. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the legal report.
Madam Mayor, because we have so many other people that are waiting for an issue, can we please move up ordinance 235? I know that the legal report has some other items, many of which can possibly wait since they involve council. They don't involve members from the public.
Is the council interested? I'm going to refer to the council. Is there a decision? Do you want to move this up?
Can we do ordinance 235, you all guys? Because this is...
Sure. I mean, we have other, we have people here waiting for Olive Court too, but yeah.
Well, why don't we just go in more?
So, are you fine with it? I don't know. I don't really care. It's fine with me.
Are we moving Olive Court up also? Well, I'm saying, I mean, we have people waiting.
Okay.
I mean, are we going to move everything up? Are we just going to move one?
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
We're doing Olive Court. That's what I hear the council wants to do.
Okay, because if...
I'm saying it's okay. It's okay with me.
You're saying it's okay to move up even though you have people for, I, I'm sorry.
Fine, okay.
Nick, it's okay.
So, you say, okay for what?
I can move it up.
Oh, to move it up. Okay. I don't know what okay.
So, three.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Ordinance 235.
So, we'll go to the ordinance 235. First consideration of ordinance 235 relating to law enforcement training against implicit bias, providing for data collection and reporting and establishing a citizens advisory board. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Motion by Virginia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Okay, discussion.
I wanted to bring to council's attention a letter I received from the ACLU. I was traveling for several days after the last council and I came into the election cycle and I contacted members of the ACLU for assistance with the final version shape of what was looking to be like the final version. And there were some issues or concerns raised about section 3B, which deals with pretextual stops. And I circulated that email that I received in response late this afternoon from the ACLU, both the letter and I also, for your reference, brought in a red line or image of that language. So, I'd like to propose, if there's no objection, to build back this language on pretextual stops, which is the same language that was presented in July. And in August, when Betty Andrews from the NAACP showed up, she did not object to that language either. So, I, I believe that we have all of the, all the civil rights organizations' interest in collectively seeing pretextual stops language being addressed in this ordinance. And so, I wanted to ask if we can please make a motion to revise the ordinance as drafted to include section B. And second, another issue that the ACLU, ACLU presented was section three, section, the section with respect to collection of data, consistent with the data capabilities of reporting. I think they were just looking for some concise language that makes the requirement that data be collected. As I explained in my email to all of you, I think they would be okay if we direct, if that language were consolidated to read, direct the UHPD to collect data. So, within six months, the chief would take the action of direct the UHPD to collect data. And later in section 5.2, it identifies what type of data is being collected. And Nick's resolution clearly identifies the source of the, of the system or software that's being used in ordinance 235. So, we're being concise without limiting the software at the ordinance level. Again, it's a matter of being efficient drafting, I think is what Nick, Nick talked to me about. And so, I wanted to bring that back in in terms of data collection. If we can shorten that to read, direct the UHPD to collect data, period, and release the rest of the language that's not needed. And then the last item is that in 5.2, we have one field that tracks ethnicity. I was unable to get ahold of anyone from Iowa City late in the afternoon to check to see if that field also tracks race. Otherwise, I don't know how the Human Rights Commission from Iowa City is able to give race breakdowns if those are indeed the fields they use in their computer. And that's the screenshot that I shared with Chief Nate Peterson about a month ago. So, Nate, if you know anything about that field with its relationship to ethnicity and race, that would be great. Otherwise, I don't have a conclusive piece of information for this council.
The only thing that I, what we heard from, excuse me, the professor from Ambrose at the last council meeting, it's all the different parameters that he told you were available are what they are. That's what Iowa City's used. That's what he's developed for them that they've been using for a couple of years now.
So, this list is taken from the software?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's their computer field. So, imagine that screenshot and those are all the fields they check. I can get a copy, I can get confirmation, but I just could not do it this late in the afternoon. So, when that issue came up, I just...
I mean, the information that he provided with us last time showed that he gave the breakdown of whites, at least whites versus blacks.
Asians, blacks, Hispanics, everybody.
Right. Well, Asians are classified in his information as white. And I believe Hispanics are in that same category because for his grad students watching traffic, they said that it was almost impossible for them in a car going by at 35 miles an hour to be able to tell the difference, primarily what they're able to, what they separate are blacks, whites. And that's what the information, the examples that he showed at the last meeting were of those. So, they lump a lot of the different minority classes together just simply because there's sort of short of stopping them and asking them, there's really...
So, my most educated guess is that that field probably means exactly what we're sharing right now.
I would guess so, yep.
Right. So, with that in mind, I'd like to request that there be a second on the motion to amend the ordinance as proposed tonight to reintroduce the same language that was... the ordinance as proposed tonight to reintroduce the same language that was introduced in July for section 3B pretextual stops. And I provided a copy to the city attorney, and the language would read, three, the first subparagraph would, you would have a subparagraph B, any law enforcement stop or temporary detention of a pedestrian or driver of a motor vehicle for a violation constituting a felony or misdemeanor offense, comma, including a scheduled violation, comma, for the purpose of investigating a separate and unrelated suspected felony or misdemeanor offense, comma, including a scheduled violation, period. It's hard to read, this is crossed out.
The one that's crossed out?
Yes, 'cause that got crossed out in the red line that I did, meaning that it's missing from Nick's version.
Right, it's just hard to read when it's crossed out.
Well, that's why I gave it to Steve Ballard.
So what are you proposing?
I'm proposing reintroduction of that language.
Of the red language?
Mm-hmm.
There's a motion by Sylvia for an amendment to 235. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Dottie.
Steve, can you speak to why this was taken out? Because my understanding was that it hinders our ability to investigate OWIs.
Well...
Can you say what OWIs are?
Operating while intoxicated.
I think Nick's probably in a better spot to talk about why it was taken out than I am, because I think it came out of his committee. But I, in my report, I said, it's the council's, it's the council's decision. Law enforcement has different views of strategies that they think are effective. I think in my report, I mentioned to you that the ACLU council that I spoke with about the statewide legislation that was proposed, told me that the biggest pushback they had about any sort of pretextual stop came from law enforcement, and that law enforcement wanted to continue to use legal pretextual stops. So it's, I think it's a policy determination for the council. It's not really a legal determination.
Yeah, so I don't see how an OWI would be prohibited. I mean, if you are...
So, yeah, let me, let me talk on that.
Let's talk about that.
Yeah, the discussion was, and the chief, correct me if I'm wrong, if someone, and Steve may have some feedback on this, too, if someone is pulled over for a taillight out, the question would be, if the officer then says, well, I then observed bloodshot eyes, slurred speech, alcohol smell, how does he or she, you know, establish that they pulled them, I mean, what do they do with that, first of all? I think that was the first point, is, well, now we've got someone that I'm gonna be accused of making a pretextual stop because I pulled them over for headlight or speeding or something else, and then I observe, you know, these other things. Now, in terms of whether it's, you know, there's a separate maybe policy issue, I guess, as to whether a law enforcement agency is actually out there purposely doing that or not. And again, I'll let the chief speak on that, I guess to the extent you want to do that. But I'm looked, I'm looking at it more as a concern in terms of just enforcement, you know, obviously the Supreme Court has said that it's okay. Initially, when we had changed the draft, that sub B was changed to emphasize that they couldn't, there couldn't be pretextual stops because of race, et cetera. But then the thought was, well, sub A already says you can't use race and doesn't limit it to, you know, other circumstances. So it was superfluous to say, or duplicative at least, to say you can't use race when you're, when you're making a pretextual stop. And so the question for the city, and I, in a sense, I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say about this, but the issue is, you know, number one, you know, would it ever be a tool that we would want our law enforcement officers to use? And then number two, maybe potentially more importantly, how, is this gonna be a proof issue? You know, is it gonna be a concern, you know, if someone is pulled over and, for one thing, and then they're charged with a second thing or a third thing, you know, how is the officer going to prove that they weren't just pulling them over for the second and third thing, and that the first thing was a sincere stop? So I don't necessarily have all the answers. That's just the way that it was presented to me, and it seemed to make sense to have those concerns.
Okay, because I want to add some additional information, just for education purposes on this. And by no means, you know, does this mean that, you know, any members of our public have more information on the practices of enforcement to speak up. I want you to imagine that you are driving by, and you happen to be a black female or a black male, so put yourself in that situation, and you are pulled over because your taillights, one of them is off or one of them is down. And that's a scheduled violation. We're not talking felonies, we're not talking anything else. We're talking a scheduled violation, one taillight out. Police officer comes in, looks at you and says, nice kid, you know, it's late at night, you came from work, at least that's your explanation, you told him, I'm working, I haven't had a chance to do this, I go to school and I'm working, et cetera. And he says, hey, I want you to fix this in 30 days. Promise me that. Kid says, sure, I'll do that. And then he says, you know, I'm not gonna write you up this time, it's just gonna be a warning, but just to ask you, do you have any guns on you? And the kid will say, no, I don't have any guns. Well, do you mind if I take a quick look? And that's what this pretextual, this is what pretextual, there's no probable cause that is generated from the time that the broken taillight conversation is taking place to jump to a reasonable suspicion or reasonable curiosity that there might be some, a gun on the premises of this vehicle, which leads you into your disproportionality of some groups of people, like in North Carolina, who were being searched more so than another group of folks. And because of the data that was being collected, that's how that was being, that was, that's how it got ferreted out. So it has nothing to do with the obvious scheduled violations, of which you have more than reasonable cause to suspect when you approach a vehicle, roll down the window, and you thought you were attending to a taillight that's out, and you have alcohol breath, maybe even marijuana smell in the car. And those are more than enough probable cause instances to proceed with investigating the first instance and the second. But in the hypothetical where I asked you to imagine, there was no probable cause in the conversation of finding out that you have a minority kid who's come from work, is working, because, and they can't get their taillights fixed, or, and you've given them 30 days. And so it just seeks to ensure that subsequent intrusive pretextual stop, pretextual searches don't take place. It doesn't keep you from, from doing your job, which is if you have reasonable cause built up or triggered at any point in your conversation, you have an obligation as an officer of the peace to follow through on that reasonable cause or reasonable suspicion. And since we have a member of the NAACP here, I'm gonna ask if they can please elaborate any further on this paragraph.
What paragraph?
The pretextual stops, and I can give you a copy of that. I don't have a copy. Does anybody else have a clean copy I can provide? Oh, yes, I do. So it's the pretextual stops.
Yes, you need to step up here.
I did speak with Betty C. Andrews, the state president of the NAACP, and she informed me that she had a debriefing with the legal address team.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone? I mean, you really have...
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but it, they don't work until you're close.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, shout.
Shout. Once again, I spoke with Betty C. Andrews, state president of the NAACP, and she had a meeting with the legal address team involving the pretextual stops. And what she would like in this ordinance, she would like the city council to implement the definition of pretextual stops. She feels very important for this to be addressed with this ordinance. So I just spoke with her today, and that's what she wants. So I'm just conveying a message. I did reach out to Nick, and she thinks that the city council is doing a good job with addressing this first and foremost. And maybe afterwards, depending on the voting process tonight, that we could perhaps set up a meeting like we did before and just finalize the process. But she's very pleased with the process right now, it's just the language and the ordinance that they're concerned about. But other than that, you're doing, the council is doing a great job. So I wanted to reiterate that.
And that's what the ACLU said, said you guys are breaking ground in a direction that is extraordinary, because we are the city that's doing something about this issue. And it just so happened, that was not the goal that I had in mind for introducing this. We just, I just saw it issue, and I think...
Well, it's difficult, too, to not be punitive, as far as the police are concerned, because how do they prove a negative? You know? It's a matter of police ethics, actually, because...
Yeah, that means...
There isn't any way that they could, you know, say, well, you know, this, I did see the taillight out, but then, you know, to take the step that, you know, a weapon? No, maybe marijuana, you know? But that's a hard thing to disprove. I mean, you know, and that's why we're gonna have a citizen board, you know, to look at those sorts of issues, because there are gonna be many of them, I can tell you.
So the data collection, some of the definitions, it was just the language that she was concerned about, that hopefully we can have this resolved before the next meeting, if it's voted on tonight. But she didn't think that it was anything that was gonna hinder the progress of the ordinance. So I thought that Virginia, Nick, I thought we had a really great meeting when we met to address some of the concerns, and I have no doubt that we could continue to get this resolved. So I just want to thank you for your work.
You for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
So do we vote on the amendment and then vote on the ordinance?
That's what we do, unless there's more discussion or you want...
Well, there's two, there's been two amendments. One is that 3B, and then second is the, the section on collecting data directs the, you know, it's section five where the chief, within six months, directs the UHPD to collect data, period. So we consolidate the information.
So I was just curious to hear back from Steve a little bit more, I mean, I, about the, really the practical aspects of this and how that can go.
Yeah, so I don't, as I said, I think these are policy decisions for the council. The hypothetical that Sylvia poses, where an officer pulls someone over and then says, by the way, can I, you know, do you have any guns? No. Can I look in your car? I mean, if that person says no, then I think Sylvia is right, just with the hypothetical, then that person doesn't, that officer doesn't have reasonable suspicion or probable cause, either one. I don't think, I don't think there could be any further investigation. I know there are data, I know there's research saying, yeah, but it's hard for some people in some groups to say no.
You have to speak for yourself.
But, but, but in terms of a pretextual stop or a probable cause analysis, you don't look at probable cause when somebody says, you can look in my car. I mean, you don't need probable cause if you have consent, okay? So the pretextual stops, in my mind, are more along the lines of the taillight, or actually, I can tell you two examples that I've litigated in Johnson County, not recently, but back when, you know, every gas station in town wasn't lit up like a Christmas tree, and every car in town didn't have automatic light-sensitive headlights. But now they kind of do. And so I can promise you that on weekends, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights in Iowa City, law enforcement officers will sit nearby Quick Trips because they're waiting for a car whose computer is telling the headlights, you don't need to be on because it's daylight, because it's so lit up. They're waiting for that car's tires to hit the pavement of the street, and they're gonna pull that car over for not having its headlights on at 2:00 in the morning. I didn't add that. They sit there at 2:00 in the morning. And they don't, I mean, are they concerned about somebody driving without headlights? I mean, my view, kind of, but the headlights are gonna come on in like three seconds, all right? But that gives them a reason to stop and do what they really want to do, is to find out if the guy's been drinking, okay? That's a pretextual stop. You know, they aren't really looking at your headlights, they want you to roll down the window, you're behind the wheel, they smell alcohol, that gives them reasonable suspicion to proceed, okay? That's a lot different than a consent situation, I mean, from a legal standpoint. And I won't tell you the other one, and I'll tell you later if you want, but there's, there are places where, you know, law enforcement specifically are targeting, you know, what are legitimate behavior, behaviors that give them a legitimate basis to stop, but really what they want to do is an OWI-type investigation. That leads to the pretext. But pulling somebody over for a minor equipment-type violation and then saying to him, may I look in your vehicle, and that person says yes, that, at least in my mind, doesn't involve pretext. That involves, I mean, the stop is pretextual, but it doesn't go into a probable cause analysis because you're saying, can I search? And the guy says yes. If the guy says no, he's on his way, I think. I mean, under the hypothetical, at least. So it is, I mean, Dottie's right, proving a difficult, you know, proving a negative is difficult. I didn't stop him because of his race or other characteristics, I stopped for the, you know, for the taillight. That can pose issues. I don't think we're talking about situations here where, where there's not the basis, the headlight or the taillight, to stop him in the first place, and that's important. It's already, you know, Dr. Chris Braun?
Barnum.
Barnum, excuse me, came last week, and he talked about two, two bases or two categories of kind of discriminatory policing. One was the stop, and the other one was the outcome, as I recall the way he described it. And, and both of those are already prohibit, I mean, it's already illegal to stop someone because of his or her race, ethnicity, national origin, or to have a different outcome based upon the person's race, ethnicity, national origin, and other protected classes. So those things are already illegal. I mean, you need to know that. And I understand the, you know, the basis for saying, yeah, but, you know, that's why we collect data, and we say, gee, it's illegal, but it seems like it's happening. Well, I mean, I think that's, that's what the data collection tool is for, I think. I hope that's what the data would help, help you do. But anyway, I think that, that some of the other issues that I addressed, and I don't know, well, there are other protected categories that are more difficult to discern, and I, you know, I think that it's hard to, I think the city puts its officers in a spot where somebody says, well, you pulled me over because of how I identify from a gender standpoint. And I don't know how an officer says, I didn't even, I didn't know how you identified, is it, you know, from a gender standpoint. So I think that's one of the reasons that some amendments to the ordinance were made, and at least some of the ones that I talked about.
So I'd like to make a motion to include, to make that change to 3B, and that's that paragraph five, I think it's 5A, where, where we, the language would redirect the UHPD to collect, to collect data, period, striking the remainder of the information.
This is amendment two.
Yeah, it's a combo amendment to, to the ordinance 235 as written.
So Sylvia, I just, I want to address the issue of the pretextual stops in your example. Number one, and I just want the public to understand, the way that your example or your hypothetical went would get that case tossed immediately, because I'm not gonna go into the legal side of it, but the officer cannot stand at the window while addressing the violation for the probable cause of the stop, and then, excuse me, then go into a consent situation. It doesn't work like that. They have to finish the stop with everything that they did prior to, prior to doing anything with consent. So walking up to the car, saying, I stopped you for a taillight out, and then saying, do you have any guns in your car? It just, it doesn't, number one, it doesn't work like that. Number two, as far as U Heights is concerned, I can tell you, in the last year, we have done a total of exactly zero consent searches. And the reason for that is, all of ours are based on probable cause, whether that's a canine alert, whether that's the officer can smell something, see something, those, all of the stops that we have done and all the searches we have done are based on probable cause. So your amendment addresses nothing, it is looking to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And... And the data that you, that we're going to collect as part of this, if there is an issue that data is going to show that. If there is an issue of an officer that all of a sudden starts asking for consent all the time, or is doing something, stopping someone a certain race or whatever disproportionately, we're going to see that. And as you stated, when, when we initially introduced this in July, we can always make changes. And if that data shows something that we need to make a change on, I think the council should make a change at that point rather than try to prevent something that simply isn't happening, is not a practice by our, our officers. And to, I can speak to the two and a half years I was here before under prior chiefs and during my time here, that was not a practice that we, that we did during that time.
Great. Then that, then you should have, I think that there's no problem objecting to the standard being in writing because-
My objection to it is, the Supreme Court of Iowa has just recently ruled on a case where the intention of the Iowa legislature with the DOT motor vehicle enforcement officers was never to, and they, legislature said this when they corrected the, the code, was never to limit the fact that they couldn't write speeding tickets. However, based on the wording of that, they were forced to refund or potentially refund two years where the speeding tickets that were issued by the motor vehicle enforcement officers because of a wording issue in the code that was later corrected, but it doesn't change the outcome. I don't want our officers losing case, losing cases or having attorneys being able to argue that because, that the officer did something because it was pretextual, the Supreme Court was very clear when they ruled on it, and the issue that you're trying to address doesn't exist. So I would like, I would like to prevent everybody from speeding in University Heights and running stop signs, but I can't prevent it before it happens and there's just-
Nate, Nate, I really appreciate your comments, but I'm going to say one thing. We don't even have the data software system to, to, to feel-
The company is ready to do it tomorrow.
As a counselor, my job is to make public policy support a department that reflects that public policy. And we, this ordinance is precisely to address the high turnover that our department has experienced as of this month. We have another officer that has submitted a resignation and moved on. And that's going to happen. I'm under no illusion that we're going to have long-term tenure with, with many of our officers. I think we're a great, uh, a, a great department that is a good training ground, uh, for, for, you know, for officers to move on, which means that it's really important that this council give direction as to its, its fundamental direction on two issues. One is racial profiling, which you're not disputing. And the second one is what is our position on pretextual, uh, stopping? If we don't do it, then this is consistent with that practice and all we're doing is memorializing it and not leaving it to, uh, policies and procedures and to whoever remembers not to do pretextual, pretextual stops. And that's the only reason why I'm supporting reintroduction of that language because I suspected that it might be consistent. And I didn't, I didn't think you would object to that consistency between current practice and language and the ordinance matching that. And, and I, I hope that the rest of the council may have an opinion on that.
Just a slippery slope, is all I'm saying.
I guess I'm just concerned, concerned that the language we have here is not, does not line up with the thing that you described that we're trying to avoid, which is a consent search. I don't want us doing consent searches.
Right.
We're already not doing consent searches.
Or prevent that in the ordinance?
Um, I'm perfectly happy to codify that we are not going to do consent searches.
Yeah, I would be supportive of it, Virginia. And, and so how is this language not accomplishing that? And if we're having some doubts on how this language accomplishes what Virginia is talking about, I'm willing to ask that the legal redress team from the NAACP show up or via conference call and give us some better assurances as to what that means. Because I, I don't want our, if, if, if we have a, a good ethics background in our, in our team, we shouldn't be afraid of memorializing that and standing by it. That's our seal of performance to the public.
Is the council ready to vote on the amendment that Sylvia has recommended for ordinance number 235 and Dottie has seconded?
I guess just further, just, I, I want to clarify what the other points are. I'm kind of stuck on the, I, I know everybody wants to move on because this meeting is going to get late, but I guess, you know, my preference is generally, the preference I discussed, was it last week, about the dog park issue? You know, rather than holding up a park for months and months to talk about whether we should have a dog park or not, I'd rather just take a, a step in the right direction. My thought would be, we pass this as is. I, I guess we, you know, we can talk about the other issues, but, I mean, the resolution, the, the ordinance takes three read, three, you know, we have to vote on that three times. The resolution doesn't. We don't have the funding right now for the data. We don't have the funding for the LED speed limit sign, which I think would be positive. That's also in the resolution. So I guess my, my preference would be voting on the resolution, first vote on the ordinance, understanding that if we do amend the language by next month, I think if we, and if we do decide we want to condense the vote, I feel better having had a vote, let people know we're moving on this so people can continue to chime in. And I'm hearing from, from everybody speaking, and I don't even know that we fully know what the issue is that we're trying to address or how we're going to address the, the consent search issue. It may be amending this or it may be doing something in a different direction. I don't know. I guess I, you know, I heard criticism early about how this has been going on since July or whatever. So I guess my preference would be to, to vote on it as is. I want, I want to talk some more with, you know, with the NAACP and, and see, you know, what you mean.
Well, I just don't see any point for us going back and forth and confusing the public. I think let's get it right because we're about to, to implement something that works for us locally and will be viewed by other people who may be looking into this issue as well. And I'm in agreement with Virginia and Dottie that pretextual stopping is not something we should be doing.
Well, maybe what we need to do is table it again until next council and get it right.
Yeah.
I want, I want it specified that we're not doing consent searches. That's, that's my concern is that the language you have here doesn't line up with prohibiting a consent search.
Would you feel comfortable if we got the, the, I would feel comfortable if we have the NAACP work on the legal team who has statewide, Nebraska-wide knowledge, look into that language so it captures your concern and it satisfies the pretext-
But I also agree with Nick that I, um, am ready to go ahead and vote on this. I mean, like, let's get something happening here.
Well, how many times do we vote on things that get changed? And it's flip-flopping, you know, it's like we're changing. I, I, I don't want to just cast a vote just to show that we're voting somewhere in that this is not a super good-
But I think this is, yeah, I just think it's, the, the real important part of this whole ordinance is that we're codifying the training for our police officers and that we're going to be doing the data collection.
And that we're taking a position on no profiling because that is not, that is permissible behavior right now. That is permissible behavior. ACLU has told me that and it's permissible behavior.
Well, I'm ready to vote on this.
Is that right, Steve?
With the, okay, they have a motion on the table, so let's vote on, on the motion.
I think we need to get it right. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable. Maybe we need more, you know, information as to what the state and nation are doing. We need specific language because this is, this is a catch 22. And we're going to have a, just an absolute parade of people filing, uh, complaints with the citizen, uh, review board. If we don't, if we have all the, the holes that are in this now, um, all we'll be doing is litigating this thing or discussing it beyond the, the amount of time it should take. I think, I would, I would like to get it right.
I guess I'm just not, after this many meetings, I'm not confident we're going to get it right at some future meeting, so let's, let's get it 95% right tonight.
I don't think we're educated enough.
Let's vote.
Can we vote?
And, no, hold on a minute, because if 95% means getting it right, then we need to vote in favor of pretextual. And if in December you have any other concerns to eliminate it, then remove it then.
No.
But not, this, we're, this is process, this is legislative process right now. And, and I think that the fairest way of addressing this is to, is to go forward with the motion that is now before the table. And if there are any changes of information in December, then pretextual goes, goes out, but not before then. And that's the only way, that would be a compromise on my end to, to allow that to go to, in that direction.
I just get concerned, I mean, even the things that you, you guys were talking, I mean, you've got consent searches and pretextual stops are not the same thing. And so that's why I'm saying, I would like to get something passed, get the funding that we need to start collecting data. We still need a year of data for Dr. Barnum to do any analysis. And every month that we push this out is another month that we don't have that. I also would really like to get the LED sign out.
Who?
The LED sign that we're, that's in the resolution. Um, I mean, uh-
I don't, I don't see the-
I don't see why we can't start making progress on this. And then if we have changes, that if we have consensus on changes and majority supportive changes, we make them. But these are big issues, you know, we are trying to be upfront. That is, you know, part of the goal here, but I think we also need to make sure we know what we're, we're passing and not expose the city to kind of unknown, you know, repercussions.
Well, but, but we should be operating in a, in a proper fashion now. We don't need an ordinance to do that.
When we, I'm not saying we're not, I mean, the-
That's right.
Right.
We're just memorializing the standard of, of, of good practice that our department has, which is why I don't understand why we can't vote on the motion.
Before you vote on the motion, I-
Yeah, let's vote on the motion.
I, so I'm looking at this language that, that Sylvia gave me at the beginning of the meeting, and I don't, I mean, I don't know if you all know what it means. I can tell you, I don't. Where this says, a profiling discriminatory policing practice-
No, no, that, they stopped there. It's deleted. That does not continue. It goes, any law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, up to comma, including a scheduled violation, period. And to make it super easy for this council to work with-
That's not what my version says.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm not, maybe I'm not com-
I, I think, I, I, I think when you read it, you just bracket, yeah.
So re-cross out that second.
Right. So the last sentence is not included specifically to keep this council from going into other concerns. But the reason again, why this ordinance is getting enacted is to memorialize what we're purportedly doing and number two for progeny. Because we have right now a revolving door of staff and we need to make sure that from this policy, from this council downward, we're sending the right message to, to our, our police staff.
Well, I don't think this is related to revolving staff, frankly.
No, no, but it's just memorializes it. There's no, there's no racial profile, there's no pretextual stops.
My vote will be no on the pretextual stop amendment and I will be making a motion to say that UHPD is prohibited from conducting consent searches.
So first of all, we vote on the amendment that you recommend.
Wait a minute, but, wait, hold on. Because consent searches is more problematic. If you have a person who wants to consent, you're now saying that that's unlawful.
No, they won't ever be asked in the first place.
They won't be asked for-
We won't be doing that search. We won't be doing those types of searches.
That's called pretextual. We're back to consent.
That's a different thing. Yeah, those are two different things.
Sorry, they're not the same thing.
Well, they're, they're somewhat related. So why don't we just wait and do, I would feel more comfortable having the legal redress team from the NAACP here walking everybody's, everybody through answers.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to vote for the amendment.
Yeah, the first one that I proposed, right?
Right.
Let's vote.
Second by Dottie and, and is the council ready to vote on that amendment?
Is on the amendment? Yes.
I'm going to do, uh, because it's on ordinance number 35, I'm going to do a roll call vote.
Okay, at that point?
This is for Sylvia's-
Amendment. We're ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Pisada?
Yes, on the motion.
Herbald?
No.
Maher?
I'm withdrawing my comment. I'm not voting.
You're abstaining?
I'm abstaining. We should be looking at this with a little more intelligence.
Okay. Um, Moore?
No.
Miller?
No.
Not passed.
Okay.
I make a motion to amend-
So now we have first consideration of ordinance number 235.
May I make a motion to amend section 3B to say UHPD is prohibited from conducting consent searches?
Got that, Steve, right? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Nick. You know what? I think we already did the motion and second on the first consideration. And then we went to the amendments. And I think it's the same people-
Okay.
-that did it. I, I think we did that. Now I'm, um, any further discussion?
Yeah, your no consent doesn't cover the loophole of, of circumstances where you still have pretextual. Nowhere in this ordinance, Virginia, does it say no pretextual allowed. Right now what you're allowing is pretext to continue.
But we're not allowed to do any racial profiling. And if we are doing any racial profiling, it will be caught in the data collection. And meanwhile-
A year later?
It's, it's exactly the situation that Steve just described. You're not allowed to pull people over to look for drunk drivers anymore.
A year later, that's what we're going to be getting into. I'm really, I, I can't say that I understand the logic behind the no consent. I still, I still believe that there is an issue with pretextual not being firmly called out as, as a matter of ethics under this ordinance. And I just, I have to abstain until there's further-
I mean, can you give me a better example? Because the example you gave is not, is consensured.
You know, I, I wish I had, that's why I'm saying that I think Dottie is making a lot of sense. You know, this is not a discussion about Triangle Park where so much information was getting tossed around and there was confusion. This is really clear. I think we need the assistance of an organization who knows this left and right and can assist us with their experience. And we have two of them. One of which submitted a letter and is unable to be here tonight, and another one that we're just a request away from asking. And I'm not embarrassed or ashamed to say that if I'm the delay, I'm happy to say I delayed the vote on tonight in favor of getting clearer instructions from, from additional resources.
Voting tonight does not prohibit us from getting clearer instruction.
This is first consideration, right?
It's for first consideration.
Well, and the history of this council changing, its first consideration is really, really low. So I'm concerned that-
We changed the Airbnb three to, three times.
So, um-
So there's a motion and a second.
I'm abstaining.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Kevin?
Go ahead.
Did I get your name right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, I just spoke with the, I just spoke with the state president of the NAACP and she said to her concern, well, she thinks that, one, um, if you vote tonight, the NAACP will be prepared to assist, to make sure that, um, the ordinance passes, you will have our assistance. But preferably she thinks that we should get it right and just maybe start next month. She's against tonight voting on it. So, but she says that her concern is that there seems to be some issues with the definitions. And so she, she said that she's already spoke with the legal redress team and they will make it a priority to come to University Heights to meet with the city council.
What would be the process? I know we tried pretty hard to get her involved over the last few months and I know she was tied up.
She's really busy, but I just got off the phone with her and now actually set up the meeting to make it work.
So can I just ask, what exactly is it that, about the pretextual? If we've already, we're covering race, we're covering, all of that is already covered in the ordinance. So in the example that I've spoken to other law enforcement in the area about is a bank robbery, is something that, you know, we have the credit union that's just down the road. If there is a vehicle that matches that description that we have probable cause to stop, now if we are prohibited from doing pretextual, I cannot stop that vehicle for the reason of asking them if they were involved in that, because that is the definition of a pretextual stop. I'm 100% on board with not doing it based on race, not doing it on other things that the officer can see on the side of the road. The problem with that is that exact situation where there's a crime that's been committed and we have a general description of a vehicle and we're stopping that vehicle for probable cause, for speeding or anything else, and then we cannot look any farther into it because that is a pretextual stop. I'm stopping the vehicle for, as Steve said, you know, no headlights, speeding, whatever it is, but it's because there, that matches a description of a vehicle that's involved in a bigger crime in the area. So as you and I have met before, we agree on pretty much everything, and I, race or other things being factored in, no, we don't want officers doing that, and, you know, we don't have the issue of officers doing that now. The data will show that. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is the exact definition of a pretextual stop when it comes to those situations.
I think that's something that we just need to, to work out with the legal address.
This is first consideration. Does council wanna?
As a sponsor of the ordinance, I'll, I'll table this if the, if the direction from the rest of the council.
Yeah, I'll defer to Betty.
I'll defer to Nick.
We have first consideration of, on the table to vote.
Well, we have the consent, I have a first and second on that, and then we have on the original, so.
No, we're down to this. We already did the amendment.
Right.
And now we're down to first consideration.
Well, Virginia made a, no consent searches. We made a first and a second on that.
We had a first and a second on the idea of getting rid of consent searches.
You had a first and a second on getting rid of that?
I think I made the motion on the ordinance, and I will withdraw that motion.
You're gonna withdraw the motion? Okay, there's a second by Nick. Are you withdrawing?
Sure.
Is there any objection from the rest of the council for withdrawing? Okay, hearing none. It's withdrawn. So this will be on the agenda next month. We might as well keep going with police, Nick, since we're already here.
Well, the other, the other item, as what I spoke about earlier, with the resolution that provides the funding, I, I mean, they're kind of intertwined, so I don't know if voting on the resolution makes sense without voting on the ordinance also.
Well, because your resolution specifically.
They cite the ordinance, so, so I would, I guess pass on that.
Okay.
Then otherwise, we are continuing to talk about outreach, and I just put on my report the idea that we, we are trying to firm up an outreach event. What we penciled in is a pizza with police, trying to keep the, I guess, the coffee with the cop sort of trend going, and I'm just.
Excuse me, are we then terminating coffee with the cop?
No, this is just trying something different to get some people in, involved with it. I think coffee is, is kind of sustainable in the sense that it's potentially lower cost, but.
Well, and more importantly, I think it's, it breaks down barriers because everybody, almost everybody drinks coffee.
Oh, yeah. It's the same idea, just, it's the same idea, we're just trying pizza once.
Everybody eats pizza.
Well, not everybody.
Well, it's kinda like coffee.
Oh, well, but you drink something.
So, um, I, once we get those details firmed up, we'll put them on the website. I just wanted to throw the idea out there so it wasn't surprising when people start hearing about it, but we're trying to get that, that figured out soon.
December 1st, if possible.
I haven't heard back yet, but, yeah.
There's not a date, is that what you're saying?
There's not a date.
Okay.
It's probably gonna be on a Monday.
Oh, okay. And then Nate, you're gonna give the chief report?
I will. Uh, first of all, I, since Jace is still here, as long as he's still here, I wanna make sure that, I let you know that I did get an email back at about 4:30, quarter to 5:00 tonight from UIPD and Athletics. They, as I've been told in the past, they share our concerns and would like to meet. So they wanna actually set up a physical meeting that if Nick can be there, somebody else from council can be part of. They encourage that, so at the very least, I'll set up that meeting and sit down with whoever they offer. We'll go, we'll, the idea is to get that set up sometime this week, or the very least before the next game. So we've got about six or seven days to work that out.
I have a question on that, Nate. With respect to priorities, since these are our streets and you are our peace officer, can't you arrest or, or, you know, move any of these individuals who are blocking?
Well, the university.
I mean, how does that work? I mean, it seems like we, we become a no, like a non-something, like.
Yeah, the council, the council and the city has always, I guess, the phrase played well in the sandbox with the university is, is how it's gone. You know, the, the council could say that we're gonna handle our streets the way we see fit during football. We've always allowed the university to send those, you know, their people over because it's, you know, it's their event. We don't wanna spend any more money on it than all of the officers already being here. So there's, there's the option to change that. We've just always allowed them to handle their business essentially.
I'd like to make a motion with respect to that comment you made, which is, you know, there's a way of working with them, and because we've had so, a struggle trying to communicate with them, I'd like to motion that the city council enter into an MOU, memorandum of understanding as to the practices that, that both parties will, will, will execute on game days so that we have better coordination for, for, you know, the sake of our residents. We need to prioritize our residents over, over, over visitors. I, I think there's a legitimate interest. So if we enter into an MOU, I think we'll, we'll forever solidify what the expectations are on both ends, we'll have quick access to resolve issues, and no one will ever be confused again, because again, it's in writing.
Well, I have a question too, because if this officer was from Marion, Iowa, that you had a problem with, I'm wondering how well the university orients their, you know, helpmates on the football day.
The best I can answer that is they have a briefing with all personnel, both sworn law enforcement and any private, the security company, the CSC that they hire to do, you know, traffic direction or just extra security at the stadium. They have a briefing prior to every game.
Yeah, they didn't get the message.
So it's, yeah.
No, I think they were briefed specifically to do what she did.
Yeah, the, the traffic flow pattern is, is what they're, they're given direction on how they want the traffic to flow, and that's, like Jace said, that's what they do.
And that's why we need an MOU.
Right.
So if, 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 do I have a second from anybody at the table so that he, so that Nate can have a, a, an intelligent conversation with his counterpart and say council would like an MOU of what the parameters of engagement are gonna be going forward?
Well, I think he already has, but if you think the council needs to.
Nate, is that what you want?
I mean, I, I think that right now, it's always just been a gentleman's agreement between the city and, you know, the, the university that they seem, the way it's been described to me by, by Jace and others, that this is, it's been a problem in the past, but the problem has gotten worse this year, and it's gotten increasingly so as the games and the weeks have gone on. So if that's any sign of things to come, us having something in writing, I think, is only, it just, it protects both parties. You know, if, if they end up leaving stoplights off like they have, as indicated in my report, then it's, you know, we don't have the liability in the issue of an accident or something that happens in our city, but they're ultimately responsible for.
Okay. Is there a second?
Jace, is there anything else you could think of to add to that MOU? Possibly not, okay.
Is there a second?
Do we need, I, I.
He thought for liability protection, it would be good.
Well, I don't know if he thinks he needs it, it's.
I think it's worthwhile just.
Second.
Having it in writing.
Okay, a second by Virginia.
Cause they leave traffic lights off.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, Carrie. You have, you have other things, I know.
Yeah.
Can we please, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We, we lost our olive courthouse people. Scott Spake is still here. Can we please move on to that and come back to this stuff?
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll go back to the legal report, consideration of resolution 1856.
No, no, I'm asking to go down to the University of Iowa School of Urban and Regional Planning Climate Action Plan for University Heights.
You wanna do Bill, okay. University of Iowa, okay. School of Urban and Regional Planning. I thought you said olive court people.
They left, so.
Oh.
Let's go with who's still here.
Okay, so we're gonna go to Scott Spake from the University of Iowa, Assistant Professor of Urban Regional Planning. Do you wanna discuss that a little?
Scott, you can come on up to the podium. Thank you for coming tonight. I got in touch with Scott over the summer, as I said in my report, to talk about the possibility of having the School of Urban and Regional Planning put together some sort of climate action plan for the city. And then we didn't really connect for a number of months, and then when the UN climate report came out, I thought, well, we really gotta get something moving here. And if it doesn't happen now, I don't know if it'll ever happen. So Scott, can you tell the council a little bit about what you all can do for us and what you need from us to get started?
Sure. What we can do for you is put together a plan that would be integrated with your comprehensive plan, all of your other adopted plans, as well as consistent with the City of Iowa City's currently pending climate action plan. So that the neighboring community with, which you have lots of inter-agency agreements, that you're on the same page with their climate plan, and that you have one for yourself that's tailored to your needs in terms of both climate change mitigation, doing your part to reduce emissions and land use change that contribute to global climate change, as well as more importantly, adapting to climate change. A lot of what we've heard tonight has been a matter of there's flooding or ponding or some other impact of climate change on your community. How do you get resilient to those? So what we would propose to do would be a climate action plan that includes mitigation and adaptation that is tailored to the fact that your city is small, and that allows us to do a technical analysis and provide technical solutions and their costs and estimated cost benefit for, at a block by block level, addressing the ways that your community is currently fragile in the face of or limited in your ability to respond to changes in climate, and would make you more resilient and save lots of money in the near term as well as in the long term, in both reducing emissions and becoming better adapted to Iowa's climate that's changing, and that's changing in ways that are very observable, these frequent severe spring and now fall rain events and slight increase in temperatures.
And how do you do that integration with the pending comprehensive plan update?
So the comprehensive plan, that's the land use and you're gliding zoning, is the physical means for implementing anything that was in a climate plan. So ideally, you'd identify the, through a climate action plan, the issues that you have related to climate change, and synchronize this with comp plan so that as in implementing comp plan, for all the other reasons that you'd want to have a comprehensive plan, you also address the climate-related issues.
I think it.
Essentially ends up being, include the same public engagement, community engagement activities that you would do for a comprehensive plan or for a climate action plan, you can do those at the same time.
I think your idea is, is a good one. I just don't think that it's, we cannot get involved in it now just because you heard all the other issues that we're trying to address now. And certainly, the council couldn't do it, and I don't think the citizens would be involved at this time. I think it's just, the spring semester is, is just not applicable in my mind. We don't even have our new comprehensive plan yet, you know, so it's a bit premature. I think another year, but I couldn't support it now.
Okay, so let me reframe. You use a comprehensive plan to implement a climate action plan.
Mm-hmm, but we don't have a comprehensive plan yet.
You missed opportunity to do a comp plan without considering these issues first.
No, I, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's, that's, this is my opinion, but as busy as we are and as financially strapped as we are, I don't think this is the right time. I think that, like I said, another year after we get more of the basic work underfoot. But this is nice, but it's, it's not essential, in my opinion.
What are some major aspects of a plan like this? If you could give just a sense of some of the things that would go into the comprehensive plan from your?
Greenhouse gas inventory and means to reduce those greenhouse gases and estimated reduction in greenhouse gases, as well as cost savings that go along with that. Locations and intensities of flooding due to impervious surfaces and expected due to change in climate, and means for reducing those and the associated cost savings and reduction in flooding associated with changing those things. Same thing with urban heat island effect, same thing with what, what you grow in public areas, in terms of ability to take up carbon or not.
So greenhouse emissions, I'm thinking, we have a fleet of police cars, would that be addressed?
So all, so.
Especially now that police cars are being, I don't know if any of you know this, but new models are coming on the market that are not as, as dirty as the ones that are currently on the market. And then the other question that I have is what are, what's the connection to landfill, which is another big car, you know, area of interest?
Sure. So all public sector greenhouse gas emissions would be included in the inventory and, and looking at ranking them and finding locations for cost savings would be, would include all your fleet, everything that the city does to provide services, which, so that includes landfill, but anything that city does to provide services to residents. In the process of being public government, anything that's expended in the process. So, yeah, landfill is totally within scope.
Now, the city does not provide solar panel installation or purchase. How, how, how would your plan fit into any of that?
Any renewable energy component of the plan would provide the means for, for incentivizing and, and streamlining the process for permitting of renewable energy. It would provide suggestions for ways that one could incentivize, that council in adopting plan would then want to, to look at the details. But this is more of identifying what is the opportunity for renewable energy, how much would it matter, and what can you do as a community to make it easier for residents and businesses to put renewable energy on the program?
Any other questions?
No, thank you, that's very interesting.
So if we're gonna proceed with this, we need a resolution indicating our commitment. I didn't wanna take up Steve's time asking for that for this meeting, because we can do it at the December meeting if there is interest in moving ahead with this. So I wanted to take a vote tonight. I guess I'll make them in the form.
I do have interest. Do you know of any other cities that have a resolution that we could copy so that we can save on legal expenses? Iowa City, Virginia.
I mean. I don't have one offhand, but.
It didn't seem like it was a particularly formal thing. I think I could probably write it.
So, yeah, I was mostly looking as bringing my, bringing my course, committing my course to create an adoptable plan. I wanted just to have something that indicated not just one council member, but council actually wanted me to do this and was interested in an adoptable plan, rather than students doing an analysis. We, School of Urban Regional Planning is a master's only professional program, and we specialize in developing plans and working with, through the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Community, to have Iowa communities actually adopt those plans, rather than.
And we want them to actually be used and not sit on itself.
So I'm just looking for commitment that council actually wants this.
And I feel like we really do have a good track record. I mean, sometimes our commitment to actually following the plans we adopt is a little questionable, but, you know, the last time we went through a thing like this, Dottie got a grant for $750,000.
I can't, I can't hear you, hon.
The last time we engaged in a process like this, Dottie got a grant for $750,000 as a result. And so I think there's a pretty well-demonstrated track record of, of coming up with a good result from engaging in a process like this.
That was also a citywide decision with the visioning project that the Monroe escape was the biggest priority.
Yep.
So, can you tell us a little bit about how much city engagement you would have in any of this? Cause I think that the biggest concern would be, you know, an external organization coming in and saying, these are all the things you need to do without having had any input or collaboration with public.
We just don't have time to.
Well, I would be a good question, but.
Can I ask a question here of you? Did you read the email that was circulated? I mean, you in general.
Yeah.
I know Dottie did. So it says, what the course will entail is drafting a climate action plan with a council member as a primary partner, one or two council members, one or more council members committed to an introductory meeting. There's a timeline in the spring that we would have to adhere to. City staff responsive and providing data. Our city staff that I would say is already pretty overextended. It also, it goes on with some other things, so it, it's a resolution indicating, indicating commitment to adopting a climate action plan, mutual understanding of scope, general environmental greening. understanding of scope, general environmental greening falls outside of this scope. There was something somewhere where it's not just something that you want to look at, it's something that you actually plan to implement. It's not just ideas. So I just wanted, you know, that was all in the email, so.
I think the important point here, though, is that we're paying for the effects of this, whether or not we take action. So we have an opportunity here to come up with some ideas to help us save money in the long run. Otherwise, we're just going to pay for it.
So long as these ideas aren't forced on the community, I'm willing, I'm interested in getting an educated evaluation of what our local circumstances offer, because you're the expert, you've got a group of even more, what did you say? They're all master's degreed.
Could you speak up, Sylvia? Could you speak up?
I'm saying that so long as these, I think Lisa was kind of insinuating that these are recommendations that have to be executed or implemented by the city.
Well, that's the course.
And my concern there is, I don't want to go down a forced path. I want the public in our community to decide what they want to implement, and let future councils figure out what should get, you know, implemented. And so long as that condition is available, I'm okay. So long as we're not signing away this council's rights and future council rights to do exactly as a report says, I'm comfortable learning what the report might say about what we can or can't, what we can do, what we should do, what's priority, what's second priority, what's third priority, just because, you know, they have the data, they have the information. It's free, right Scott? Zero dollars to the taxpayer?
Zero dollars.
So it's free information. How can we turn it down?
But this says, the understanding is that this course will develop the plan, not generating a report, or suggesting some interesting options, or providing initial scoping, preferably acknowledging integration with the Iowa City Plan, which is online, and you can go and read through what the Iowa City Plan is. I mean, it's bullet point by bullet point.
And our community, Sylvia, our community, we are inundated now with involving the public in trying to make really core decisions that are going to direct the future of the city. And I don't think we have time for this now. I mean, and I certainly don't think our resources are able to hardly handle what we have, let alone more. And we can't have more meetings.
I am proposing to add a few questions to the existing public scoping, and a few activities, the existing public scoping that you plan to do for the comprehensive plan anyway.
But see, the new comprehensive-
Most of the connections that require-
The new comprehensive plan has not been evolved. We have not, they have not distributed it yet to the city. We will be involved with that. We're involved with the Swisher tract. We're involved with, you heard the streets, maybe you didn't, the streets and sidewalks. We have major core issues. We cannot take the city, energy, or time to get involved in a project like this, this spring. That is my point.
All right. I want to make a motion that we-
In practice, this is limited additional activities that go along with, and are completely tied to, anything that one would do for engaging the public in a comprehensive plan, both in the scoping, as well as in the review. The terms that I was trying to put in was not, you have to adopt exactly the plan that students hand you, and with no deviation. It was just that council saying, you'd like a plan, and you'd like us to develop a plan that you can then modify and pick and choose from, but that you actually plan to have it be a part of what you're doing.
Can you provide us with an update to that language? I like the way it's sounding much better. But Lisa, was that the core of your concern, what Scott just-
No, that is not all of it. It's that we are involving city staff, when our city staff seems to me to be pretty overworked. It's more time from everyone, including the public, which, I don't know, I hear from people about meeting fatigue. It's, when I read through these things that are listed for Iowa City, increased recycling, is that not something we can do without a plan, without going through all this? Composting, you going to tell people they need to compost, reduce waste at the source? A lot of things are, it just seems to me, these are things you make a decision to do on your own.
So for this community, the emphasis is on the block by block climate adaptation, not, your community's greenhouse gas emissions are just not very large. Climate mitigation is not a big solution for you, and there's easy ways to do it. And there are many low-hanging fruit that don't require analysis, like you mentioned. The stuff that requires place-based analysis is, how do you prevent your areas with impervious surfaces from flooding? How are you going to address your urban heat island effect? How are you going to make sure that your transportation system works during those flood days that are becoming more frequent? Those are the things that require local analysis, that are beyond what Iowa City has done.
I want to suggest possibly, this is the first time it's been on the agenda, and I'm hearing different comments from, but the public hasn't weighed in on it. And maybe if it was put on the agenda again, and some public could weigh on this before a council moves forward, and have a resolution ready next month, and-
I guess I'm not sure what the, I mean, I'm always for public input, but I guess I was hearing him say that this is part of, if we're going to be doing a comprehensive plan, you're getting the feedback from the public as part of the comprehensive plan development, and this would be integrated into the comprehensive plan development. So I guess I'm curious-
You need to check with Kent Ralston on that.
That's right. I mean, that's, I think, how they would be integrated, right?
Yeah. How can we do that today?
It's premature. It's premature.
Have you worked with them before?
I have not worked on an integrated plan with Johnson County MPO.
Okay.
But how about other MPOs? Yeah?
Yeah, of course.
And I mean, what would happen, if we go forward with this tonight, and he says, I don't want to, I mean, I can't imagine he'd say he doesn't want to work with you, but I mean, what would be the worst case? I just continually get concerned that we kick things down the road a lot, and that we never, you know, that we often are not addressing them. I mean, do you have a better sense of this, Virginia? I know you kind of understand the situation with our comprehensive report coming up.
I think we ought to have Kent weigh in on it.
Yes, I do too. It's premature. It's premature.
I mean, I know he's going to have something ready here this week.
I just, I can't- Can we also have clarification on that language, so that, you know, some counselors don't communicate to the public some other-
I'm not worried about that.
You know, language that you probably put together, you know, really quickly, and I'd rather have a more nuanced, saying you're going to put together a menu of options. It's up to the council, and it's not going to be mandatory, because I think that's the regulating concern right now.
What I would say is, I appreciate you spending the time with us tonight, coming here. I'm in support of this idea. I don't know what we need to do to get it, I don't know what the timeline is and everything, but I just don't want to miss timelines. I want to keep this going at the right rate. So whatever we need to do to do that, I'm interested in, I guess. That's what I would say at this point.
So we have three counselors who are in favor of moving forward with this tonight, is that correct? And we have two counselors who are not in favor. Is that correct?
I can't hear you. Your mumbling into the-
We have three counselors who are in favor of moving forward with this tonight. We have two counselors who are not in favor of moving forward with this tonight.
And I think the city is just overwhelmed in all the issues that they're addressing now.
This doesn't sound to me like this really requires a lot over and above what we're already doing. It's really a missed opportunity if we don't-
There'll be another opportunity. It's not going away.
Just to clarify, Virginia, we want to put this on the agenda in December.
Okay.
So we can get clarification on the MPO GC's position-
That's what I heard.
Language for action for that email that Lisa has lovingly explained to me.
There isn't time.
It was not lovingly.
Does that work with your timeline for another month?
I mean, I don't know that that's, yeah, I don't know that that's possible, but-
Because I know you've got semester you need to plan for, I mean, from what I'm hearing.
Well, the resolution wouldn't be till next month.
Yeah, and you've got to, you've got to-
I mean-
Could we move on?
But, so Sylvia, do we need the things you just said we need?
Maybe the resolution should speak to that. Why don't we take it that way? Yeah. He says it's okay. Let's do it that way.
Timeline's okay with you?
It's not ideal, but that works.
Okay.
What are we talking about? What are you mumbling about? I can't hear you.
Oh, my gosh.
You're not talking into the mic. I get criticized for it, and you're not doing it.
No, I do too.
So-
Steve, can you turn up the mics a little? Are they turned up?
They're all the way up.
They're all the way up? Okay, very good. I'm just checking.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I guess we'll talk about it again next month.
And get a resolution ready for next month. Now, we'll go, where do we want to go from here? Do we want to go back to the police?
How about home?
With the budget? I mean, all of courts not here, you're saying?
Yeah, there's someone here for the police also.
Okay, well, all of courts not here.
Right.
Okay.
So we'll go, if it's okay with council, we'll go back to the police report? Okay. I'm not hearing any negative. Okay, so Nate, back to you.
All right, so, this is going to be easier. So as I had in my report, basically, what we're looking at is, we have a lot of technology needs that need to be addressed. We're trying to address those in the most cost-effective way possible for the city, both presently and going forward. In partnering with Kel-Tec in the last couple of months during football, doing the program that I talked to you guys about with the MG90 mobile routers and AT&amp;T. Throughout that process, we've had other conversations that have been going on now for several months about essentially renting squad cars from them, is the best way I can put it. Our budget now says that we lease cars, but that's a dollar buyout at the end, so we're paying interest, and we're, you know, we're financing that, we're not leasing it. This is a true zero, zero-interest rental from Kel-Tec. We have the service side of it, as well as the physical products. So there's these two line items. It would include all of the things I have listed, the squad cars, body cameras.
What does outfit mean?
The, taking the car from its new position from the factory, putting the camera in it, the emergency equipment, the radios, the, everything that goes into upfitting the car to go from a civilian-style vehicle to a squad car. So all of that is, what I need tonight going forward is, we are currently number one in line for doing this program. There are, from what I understand, about a dozen departments that have shown interest. They need a commitment from us that we're going to go forward with it prior to Thanksgiving. So this is the meeting that we would need, not necessarily to approve the whole budget, but to approve going forward with this overall replacement of some issues that we have. The evidence storage, I can talk outside of council about specific details, but I can tell you the current method in which we do that is against the advice of our insurance. And we, when I met with her prior, she was told we had this in the works, because these discussions were happening. So that was not held as a negative against us. So we are going to have to spend money to fix that issue. Regardless, that's a server issue, that's a cloud storage issue, that could be ballparking rough numbers of $30,000 just for that, and that would not get us body cameras, that would not get us all the other technology, or the service side of what Kel-Tec has to offer. Ryan from Kel-Tec is here tonight, if the council has questions for specifics on what Kel-Tec offers as part of that service. If he wants to get up and talk a little bit about that, we can go that route.
Thanks. Ryan Silver with Kel-Tec, Baxter, Iowa. Anybody have any specific questions? Otherwise, I'd probably just give you a little bit of an overview on how we're implementing this type of program with other departments, why other departments are considering it, and then maybe who Kel-Tec is, even as a company. Does that sound, make sense?
Yeah, that's-
All in 34 seconds, right?
Okay.
Okay. Kel-Tec's a $12 million company, family-owned out of Baxter, Iowa, which is between Newton and Marshalltown. It's been an outfitter, which Nate got right. You take a civilian car, you build a car, and now you have a police car. And we started 25 years ago, with the owner of the company doing this out of his parents' garage for Jasper County and the city of Baxter. What's happened over 25 years, we've gone from a little round light on top of a cop car, to this amazing mass of technology to keep your officers safe and your citizens safe. We've heard a lot of law enforcement issues tonight. Evidence capture is key. Keeping your officer laser-focused on what he's doing on the spot is key, and not worrying about engine compression in cylinder number six in their car going out, or the heater not working, or, I mean, there's all kinds of things that happen that can take your mind off the task at hand. So what we've seen is departments really, or cities and counties, really inundated with the economics of what it means to be a police department or a sheriff's office these days, and what it means to have a car on the road. We have multiple cameras in cars and on bodies now. They have to, the evidence has to run a chain of integrity, which is, I think, what Nate was maybe talking about with the storage issues. We have to make a lot of people happy, and everything costs just a little bit more money, or in many cases, exponentially more than what it did 10 years ago. So then there was this big question around if departments and sheriff's offices should even own a highly-depreciable asset, kind of like your copy machine in your office, or your water cooler, or even your modem that you get when you sign up for cable. You get this equipment, but you don't really think about it, and if something happens to it, it gets swapped out. Or if it needs to be, if it's broken, then the service guy just shows up, hopefully sooner than later. We started implementing that with technology a few years back, and now we have a neat investor pool, which alludes to Chief talking about our limited supply in this program, but we have an investor pool that backs up law enforcement to be able to do this even with vehicles. So again, a few years ago, we started doing it with cameras, with Toughbook, with rugged laptops, with the mobile routers that we have in the cars that we ran FirstNet or AT&amp;T on. And it really worked out well, and we started getting demand, hey, can we do this with the whole car? So that really came from our city councils and from our county supervisors. And we played around with it for probably longer than I would have liked as the consultant, but we played around with it, and now we've pulled the trigger earlier this year, in 2018, and the demand has been huge. Because we've really developed a neat relationship with University Heights, and with being able to test FirstNet when we weren't quite sure if it was going to work. So during game day, and it worked really well, we've been able to have some good conversations. University Heights is at the top of the list if we want to consider renting the whole car. We don't know if we use the word rent, or lease, or as a service.
Is that priced $45,000 for both vehicles that the department has, or is that per vehicle?
I think Chief can answer where he came up with that number.
So that would be for five squad cars outfitted with all of the associated equipment, and that, those numbers include replacing our current body cameras, the storage system we use for those, as well as that cloud storage for the in-car cameras, the body cameras, the reports, the photos from accidents, all of that stuff. Every side of the service, as well as the physical hardware, is encompassed in there. It's literally-
And Nate, did you say that this is for five vehicles? I thought we only had three.
Correct. We only have three currently. This would be a plan to, every officer would be, full-time officers would all be assigned a squad car. Part of that deal is, we are leasing them, so no different than if you were going to, you know, to Billion or to another, you know-
So wait a minute.
Car dealership. There is, we have a mileage limitation, so because we have the mileage limitation, we're able to do the increased number of squad cars for the same price, or roughly the same price as what we could do three for, because Kel-Tec, we'd have to buy the vehicles and just have them do the outfit, because if I give Ryan back a car that has 75,000 or 80,000 miles on it, they're going to sell that as a civilian car. They cannot then turn around and resell that to another law enforcement agency, because that car in law enforcement, in the law enforcement world, has a residual-
That's Kel-Tec's calculation.
Well, unfortunately, we're sharing the-
Yeah, we won't do that service at that level. Yeah, we won't do that service at that level. I think what Chief needs to say is we can't even do that. So, you're right, it would be our problem. We'll take a lot of risk with you guys.
Right.
But it can't be a losing risk, right?
So, I just want to know why we increased, you know...not too long ago, we had former chairman Jim Lane make the police department dispose of one vehicle because it was too expensive and it was, you know, it's cost. And we have to monitor our budget. So, I wasn't aware that we're now $45,000 times five. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, that's total. That's everything. That is everything in the office, as well as the online component, as well as...
No, no, I got that. I just...
Panasonic in general.
What the equipment lease was.
So, is that every year?
Is that every year?
Yes, that's a yearly commitment with Kel-Tec for them, like I said. If we have something, like Ryan alluded to, if we have something that breaks, they come here and fix it. If I have a computer that gets run over in the parking lot, as long as I have a shell of that computer, we get a new one. Currently, if that happens or if anything would happen, a car were to catch on fire out here right now, I'm going to come to you and ask for money to replace those things that we simply don't have. This is sharing that risk for a small community like ours, sharing that risk with Kel-Tec that they're saying, "We're going to let you rent the vehicles at the risk that if something happens or if we end up spending 1,000 hours that we don't plan on servicing those, we're out."
So, is that per vehicle?
No, that's for all of them.
For all of them, for everything?
Yes, everything.
So, is that...Ryan, is that...if we only have two vehicles, is that still 45K? Or does it go down?
It goes down. And just to add color, you know, it's sharing the risk with Kel-Tec, but with a pool of vehicles.
Sure.
So, you can kind of think of it as an insurance pool, right?
Yeah.
Also, we see maintenance costs go down drastically. Because I think you'd mile out in that 40,000 to 60,000 mile range.
Right.
So, now, I think maybe why we don't keep old cars is because they're just so expensive and they do have to keep running. So, but yeah, I don't know if it'd be dollar-for-dollar, frankly. I think Chief's just asking for a number to work within. We haven't done any hard quoting. I've given him some budget projections.
UHPD on a super tight budget. I mean, they gave up bullet money in order to help us close a financial gap in February. So, I'm interested in figuring out what's a sweet spot maybe for that equipment lease. Because for five, it's a lot. It's a big ask and it's dropped on counsel tonight and...
Well, as I said, it's come up recently that they got that, the formal go-ahead that we could do this, number one. And number two, yes, it would...obviously, if they could hold the spot till March...
Would that be possible, Brian? Not March, but we're going to be talking about budget in the next 45, 60 days.
As is every other city that they're working with is the issue.
Uh, the equipment...yeah, the equipment lease is always on the table. Frankly, probably shouldn't say it this way, but we kind of have an unlimited pool to be able to tap into from an equipment lease standpoint. From a titled vehicle standpoint, I have a limited number of vehicles. So, I want to play as nicely as possible, but it's good business sense also to pursue opportunities with other departments, I guess, when it comes to titled vehicles. Can I bring up the Charger/Ford/Tahoe conversation? Or you already...
Yeah, absolutely.
You guys are in a sweet spot also because I think your department wants to standardize with Charger, with Dodge at least. So, you alluded to the fact that there's hybrid vehicles coming down the line, which there are. So, Ford is going to roll that out in 2020. We can take orders for those now to be delivered in August, September. The average Ford right now, which you're driving, I'm driving, is about a $30,000 vehicle. And pricing has just come out and it's close. The new hybrid 2020 is coming out at about $41,000. Everybody is freaking out. Forty...it's an $11,000 increase, 33% in one year. So, that's a rising tide that's going to do a couple of things. Because now that's the price of a Tahoe, Tahoe's going to go up. Chevy's going to see that as an...as an advantage. They're going to push it to 35,000 or 36,000. At the same time, your Charger is $23,000 to $25,000 right now on state contract. And your Durango's maybe 27,000 or 28,000. They're going to see the opportunity also and they're going to float up, still stay within the hybrid cost of the Ford. They still want to be the cheapest option. But your Charger's probably going to be $7,000 or $8,000 more in six to 12 months. So, we're in a weird sweet spot that...I'm not a car dealer. So, I really...I'm not selling anything here from that standpoint. But you're talking about a $7,000 to $8,000 increase, I think, for Chargers and Durangos sooner than later. Certainly not in the next 45 to 60 days. You're fine.
Yeah.
But state contracts will be good, I think, through...is it just the end of this year? Is it calendar year? In the state of Iowa? They're out to bid right now and they'll probably publish mid-January. And I don't know if we'll see an increase then or not, so...
So, just to your point, I guess, the Chargers that we would get now under this plan are roughly $25,000 at state bid. And if we were to do this plan a year from now, you're adding $10,000 a car roughly for whatever number we do. So, the idea behind this is a fixed cost in the budget for which fixed costs across the board, any budget is our best. There's no surprises. And to have the fixed cost and have it be as cheap as possible and be solidified in that four years. We have...we're going to replace, as the current plan goes, at least two of the vehicles during this next four-year window. So, again, if we wait and replace those two vehicles after those price points go up, we're automatic...we're spending another $20,000 by waiting. And we still have the, like I said, the backend side of it, the storage, the computer issue, the outdated technology issue that...
How did you get to 120,000?
We have to address. 120 for what? We're at 90.
We're at 90 right now.
Yeah, we're at 90 for literally everything. Everything an officer uses throughout their day.
No, no, I got that. You mentioned 120, so I didn't know how to jump it up.
No, I said we're saving 10 to 20. You're spending 10 to 20,000 more because the vehicle price goes up by that.
Sure.
10,000 for every vehicle that you're going to buy a year from now.
And, okay.
So, this is really...I'm not...really, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but I will say the technology that we have is six to eight years old. It's very outdated. This computer that's sitting in front of me is at least six years old. It's the same one that I used when I was here before. So, they've gone beyond their lifespan, and Ryan can speak to that, what Panasonic says they should be used for, even though they are rugged. They...it's old technology and it's...
But it's still reliable and it's still...it's acceptable in evidence, right? So, chain of custody issues wouldn't be generated because you're working with this laptop, right?
Until it breaks and you're on a call.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, it becomes an officer and a public safety risk that I have three body cameras right now that we can't use because I'm waiting on parts from the company. With Kel-Tec, that's not going to be an issue. I mean, I call Ryan or...
What's our warranty on those?
We're outside of warranty on everything.
Five years, depending on the technology, but the Toughbook is five years, so...
See, I'd like to be a little bit more helpful, but I have more questions and answers, in particular because we have increased what the vehicle anticipated expenditure to five vehicles. That's concerning. Historically, we've never, ever had five vehicles in University Heights. We've struggled with three. And to jump to five, that's a huge concern for me. I need to understand what exactly is the game plan that this budget wants to address? I'm not saying no, I'm just saying the number five is, you know, unanticipated. And I'd like a little bit more time from Ryan to noodle through this information. Sounds super interesting. And I'm all for supporting law enforcement to do their work with as much ease and confidence and safety. But I need to understand how that's going to impact our local budget and why we need so much of what we're ordering.
So, one of the things I do...you mentioned earlier that I just want to say it addresses is... It's hopefully going to address the issue of officer retention. It's not going to be, you know, it's going to be factored into the overall benefits package. If I'm an officer at X department in this county, I, you know, don't have the benefit in most cases unless you work for a sheriff's office to have a take-home car. I can give you a couple of examples in the state of Iowa and Illinois that departments this size or a town of 5,000 or less with about a dozen officers that all have take-home cars for the purpose of...it's a reason to stay there. They...it's your office. When I get in that car, that's where you want the officer to be. You know, yes, we have a physical office here in the building, but that squad car is no different than going to your cubicle at whatever job you have or your corner office. That squad car is that. So, for the officer to have the ownership of that, the cars are maintained at a better level, they are...the officer is, like, as you said, safer because, you know, the officer before me didn't change the seat or adjust the mirrors or change some settings that I don't know about. That car is mine and it's set up for me every day.
You know, I've got to tell you, I'm more worried about healthcare insurance being a better fit for our officers than I am for our officers to have a private car. I think healthcare insurance is much more demanding and much more useful.
The officers would disagree with that.
Well, I understand that if they have a family, they don't. But if they're single, they would agree with you on that.
Well, I'm not sure if it's a...with all due respect, I'm not sure if it's an either-or. Maybe it's a little academic without having a spreadsheet to analyze.
That's true.
But I know "but," we can also visualize the spreadsheet that shows three cars running out to 120,000 miles is going to cause a lot more problems and a lot less predictability, both from a budget and workflow standpoint and safety standpoint, than maybe five cars running out to 50,000 miles for the same price.
Right. And I could say the 50,000 only because there's 15 streets in University Heights that are being monitored, right? I would presume that these cars would not be going off elsewhere to go monitoring, correct?
They're not. But the average, as Ryan said, the average that we have gotten rid of cars, the last at least two cars we've gotten rid of have been between 110,000. The last one that we got rid of a little over a year and a half ago was 100 and...over 120,000 miles. That trend with the car that's due to be replaced in the next year is right on point with that mileage.
And how much does this push your budget over? Because I'm assuming that this is...
How much it changes it as of right now? It's roughly 94,000.
No, 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 your total budget for UHPD.
Oh, total budget is...
Because I thought, you know, we were in a really tight corner.
Total budget would be 592,020, which is well within...so, I don't know what happened for a rough, about a three, four-year period there. But I can tell you that standard increases...in 2015, the budget was about 500 and...
Can you repeat the number, 5?
592,020. I don't know if it's...
020.
Yep. So, in 2015...
And last year, you came in at 498, correct?
Well, we came in at 509 originally and agreed to some cuts that brought it down to 496. So, we can make adjustments elsewhere going forward in the rest of the budget. The idea is not...to me, it's not the total number at the bottom at this point. It's this program and making adjustments as we need to throughout the rest of the budget. We can be flexible, but this solidifies so many...I mean, we're reducing maintenance costs. We're so many things that we're...
You're saving in other areas, is what you're saying. But I'm just saying again, I...there's a lot of information.
We're saving liability primarily.
I'm...yeah, and I want to talk about the liability because it's an e-government issue. And we do have some really good residents that can give us very quickly some security access evaluation on this.
Well, it's a part of this that Panasonic, with that information going to them, if we have a legality issue or if Steve's office, we go to traffic court and they want to challenge...they didn't run the stop sign, we adjusted the video. Panasonic, from what I understand, will send their attorneys out to fight the legality of that video at no cost to us just as part of the service to say, "No, this video is housed at our facility. This is...we maintain the integrity of it."
Right, right. No, that's a good...
That went by pretty fast, Sylvia. What did you just say about we have some residents that can do what? I didn't hear that.
They can make an assessment on security. And I understand you've been contacted for some...
Oh, you understand that? That's very interesting.
Word gets around.
Yes, it is. We have some residents that can tell us how our police need to...
No, 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 they can evaluate some of the services for security reasons.
Is the council going to ask this? Is the council going to ask them to do that?
No, because that's not part of the comment. You know what? Don't worry about it.
No, I am worried about it. I am worried about it, Sylvia, because you brought it up. You mentioned it in...
In passing.
In passing, yes, and I want to hear about it.
So, I want to hear more about this program. But as I've said, I can't really make an informed decision.
We're asking residents...
This is a lot of financial information and it's...
We're asking residents to do what, Sylvia?
It's almost 100...
Sylvia, we're asking residents to do what? We're asking residents...
Lisa, disregard it.
No, I'm not disregarding it. I'm asking you a question. We're asking residents to do what?
Lisa, we'll take this outside of...
I'd like to...
No.
What's the answer?
Yeah, what is the answer? We're...no, I want to hear it.
No, there's nothing. Here's what you want to hear. The current budget is for 496,000 and it increases to 592,020. That's a pretty significant jump, which means that other city budget line items are going to be taking a hit somewhere. Or are you prepared and ready to tell residents you're about to increase their taxes?
Well, you have been over and over.
So, the question is going to be, how much time do we have to review this? I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight informed at that because obviously, you know, I still have some concerns that you are now concerned about too. So, that being the case, I'd like to...I'd like to evaluate this. I think we were all instructed at the last council meeting to come prepared to do a special meeting or with our calendars to do a special meeting. So, I'd like to find out what our options are so we can meet on this. If not, we can take it up in December.
You mean a special meeting for Swisher?
No.
For what?
For this. I mean, are you expecting a decision tonight? Because if you are, I completely feel under-informed. I did not know that there were five vehicles contemplated, which is a policy change that's very dramatic from what this department has done. It's also competing with the position of this council to determine whether we're going to offer better health services or less health services because we are now experiencing a spike in expenditures in another budget line item or not. And so, for me, this is squarely within council's prerogative to discuss.
But Nate, what is the expected cost of cars and maintenance and equipment over the next four years? Because it really seemed to me like it was a wash and we were going to end up...
Yeah, I mean, we're...
Like, the increase from three cars to five cars was really because that lessens the maintenance or the wear and tear on each car.
Right, we're not responsible for anything outside of regular oil changes, tire rotations. Anything else breaks on that car, it's part of the deal with Kel-Tec. That car has 100,000, you know, through Dodge, has 100,000-mile bumper-to-bumper warranty. You know, we're reducing those costs. And, yeah, to build...if we were to build just one car outright and pay cash for it with the same technology, Ryan can probably give me a number, but I'm going to guess that's a $60,000 to $70,000 build with an arbitrator or the body camera to go...
30 on top of the car.
Yeah, so 55,000 minimum plus the...
And we have a data storage problem.
Plus, we still have to fix the data storage problem.
Which is a $30,000 problem.
Is an estimate from the technology folks. They...I didn't get a specific quote because I...that would cost money for him to come and tear apart everything we have.
And I don't understand the data technology issue either. So, what's the limitation? Is it because it's stored on the cloud and it's unsecured or...
The issue is that it's not stored on the cloud. And the only side to that...I'll tell you, it's not stored on the cloud. Where it is stored is...has a couple of different risk factors. The area that it's stored on is outdated and...
Outdated is, you know, doesn't mean that it's useless or not safe.
Outdated and not safe to continue...we're on borrowed time, is the IT person's response to...
Did you get different quotes from different IT people or just one?
No, this is the company we use for everything, the same company that Coroville, the city of Coroville uses and some other North Liberty. So, it's...
Does other council members have some opinions about this proposal? Does other council members have some opinions about this proposal? I think I've got Sylvia's opinion.
I think we do. It sounds like a good proposal to me. Nick, are you going to?
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, you know, it's, they're trade-offs obviously. Um, it's like leasing a vehicle rather than buying it. We find ourselves though, as was explained, I think, with a lot of technology, it's changing that needs to work. And so this seems like a good way to keep our technology current and, you know, have newer stuff that hopefully won't break. Um, you know, some of the things that have been interesting to me, to hear are just the, you know, the, like, the, the ability to sell a vehicle with lower miles and retain some of the value because some, you know, police department or sheriff's office or whatever that doesn't maybe put as many, you know, put the miles on or wants to buy a vehicle with that, you know, broken into that extent, allows you to, to actually, you know, make more money selling it than if you drive it to, you know, until it's ready to fall apart. And then you add the maintenance and the, you know, the, you know, possible malfunctioning or whatever of it. It seems like, I mean, the, the details do matter, but in principle, I think it makes sense. Um, and, you know, they've been working hard on the details and, and talking about the budget and all of that, so, um, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's something that would help us move forward.
I think it's a good idea. I, my, my concern is in a little village like ours, do we need five police cars when there's hardly any area to traffic?
That's right.
So my response to that, Dottie, is I've worked for other departments, one of which in a town of about 4,500 people that had four cars for seven officers, two more full-time than what we have here, on an average of at least twice a year because of whether it was, you know, a deer accident or maintenance issues on the car, because we drove them in that department to 150, 160,000 miles, we, we had cars, we were down to one. We, we had seven full-time officers and
Well, I
People working
I think, um, I think this service is, is a valuable one and I think, I want to think about this, but I think I need to look also at the entirety of the budget.
Right.
Because I noticed that you wanted another lighted sign over on the entry, Melrose, and we already have a lighted sign and we'll just get a white poster sign, because, you know, it's not a police community, so to speak, and I, I want to keep us up to date, but some of these things, I don't, I mean, we don't need another lighted sign, you know, we have one that we can move over there, in my opinion.
And my, and I just want to clarify and reiterate that I'm surprised to learn that this covered five. I think that's a policy item that, that should be shared with council so that, you know, you could, you can get our buy-in for that. And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, five is historically way too much and out of line. And, and we've been, we've struggled with our budget, we're going to continue to struggle with our budget in the next 24 months. I'd rather like to see a more right-sized, um, package proposal for what we have right now. It's worked so far and
Well, I can tell you at least with this project, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from the CEO, from Kelly's comment was that we, the idea is that we're going to work something out as part of this for the three vehicles that we have to reduce year one costs or within the next 18 months, because this budget starts July of next year through
Yeah, so I didn't come with any numbers, but certainly we're willing to give you basically a trade-in value on your vehicles, uh, to get, to get the first year cost maybe even a little lower, I guess. Um, and that would be part of probably the hardened steadfast quotes, um, because obviously we don't just go with this number, so this would give us basically the green light to, to get specific. Um, you said it's just working, and again, with all due respect, it's not working. I've heard a lot of pain, uh, coming out of that department right now, and the whole goal is to get rid of pain and get these guys focused on what they need to focus on, and that's not, that's not taking a car in 12 different times in the last 12 months.
But you know what? I've got to tell you that, you know, what's painful too, and we've heard this on the last council meeting, is taxes going up for our residents. We heard that several, several times, when people came and talked to us about expenditures of Swisher Track and et cetera. Taxes are hurting and we need to be responsible stewards of that resource that's limited. And while I'm not saying no, I am saying somewhat. Let's, let's find out a little bit more, and I would hope and trust that Nate and Brian, you can come up with something that works for the, for what we have now, and I'm not foreclosing or shutting off future conversations to increase it to something else if it makes sense, because we've got some bigger issues coming up. Healthcare is something that is, it's experiencing a 20 to 33% industry increase for small groups, and I'm super concerned about that.
Well, I think
So I'd like to address that really quick. So Steve Kuhl, last year, uh, within his estimate, he included an increase in that, so our current budget amount would cover the current budget year, what we have budgeted, that increase for five officers at the new rate, we don't have to change that line item. So the city is our, based on what Steve estimated is the increase, that health insurance line item is already covered. There is no budget increase because of that, and as you will see in this budget, even if I include an 8% factor for increasing, that's only 2,200 dollars over what our current budget is. So if we reduce that to what we actually will be paying, we, we don't change the budget from this present year on health insurance at all.
Um, I, I still, I need, I need time to look at this and I need numbers as well. And, but I do like the product. I think it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive package, which is, I think that's what is incentive
Nick, what do you have to say?
I mean, again, for timeline, I'm just, I mean, it's like the many things that we've talked about tonight, um, that we're, we're pushing in the future. What is the, what is the timeline exactly? I mean, we've got another meeting December 11th, is that, is that the next one? Um, what, I mean, if, if we were going to make a decision at, on December 11th, what, I mean, is that too late? What do we need to tell you at that point? You know, are you able to get any more precise quotes before then? I mean, what, what are our options, I guess?
I, yeah, I wish I had a better answer for you. Um, the answer for you tonight is that I'm scheduled to present the same, I, I have 23 vehicles that I can put in this program, and I'm, I'm scheduled to have the same presentation with, uh, on my calendar with seven other departments at their December city council meetings. And you can imagine that falls right, right? When you're having your city council meeting too, I have no problems getting
And it's not necessarily
Very specific.
Have to come back, but
Yeah.
Well, so the issue
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if they say yes, the cars are gone.
Yeah, yeah.
So I told Nate I wouldn't present this at all to, in November, I've had a lot of conversations, we're working with subcommittees, as you can imagine, and they're getting ready to, to present also.
So, so in terms of the five vehicles versus three, I'm hearing that it's almost more about miles than the number of vehicles. Is there anything else you can say about that in terms of what Sylvia raised, perception in the community of multiple vehicle, you know, the additional vehicles, the overall cost of, of it all, why, why you've suggested five rather than three or four or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's the cost per mile that we're putting on these cars or even the time hour. Most, uh, vehicles now in a fleet, um, are rated by the hours that they're in service more than they are about the miles on the car. So it's about, I mean, we, especially law enforcement, we do a lot of idling also for a variety of reasons. Um, the, it, it's, it, it might go against your grain when you're thinking about this, but in a fleet, the cost of hours are cheapest on the front end of a new car. They get very expensive on the back end of a new car. When it comes, I'm, I'm a citizen, and when it comes to my taxes, I like my city council to strive for consistency and predictability, and this is a program that has definitely been built for that also. We don't have to worry about replacing engines, uh, we don't have to worry about replacing, uh, probably not even brake pads. Uh, literally 49,500 miles is really the max we want to mile these things out at. We're predicting that's about, when we do the, when we measure the hours on the car, it's going to equal about 70,000 miles. I think, uh, Kel-Tec brings a strategic advantage to this type of program because we, we serve 700 departments in five states, so I know which departments want a 50,000 mile vehicle. We could say you could own the assets, and then we could have chief and the council manage the fleet and then sell them.
We're so super local. I mean, we only have 15 streets we're monitoring. And the radius is less than a quarter of a mile in terms of the square area.
But I'm not sure if I'm worried about that. I'm worried about what your fleet is actually experiencing? So it's just a simple analysis then on a spreadsheet?
I'm just clarifying that if miles, cost per miles and wear and tear are coming into that concern, my, in my, in my mind, we're only patrolling 15 small streets, some of which aren't even a whole street, like a, a Grandview.
Not really about the number of miles of streets, it's the number of hours you're doing patrolling in the car, right?
Well, he just said it's what costs per mile, wear and tear, or wear and tear from idling, so
So, so the simple analysis is three cars times amount of miles or hours used in a year, or five cars times the same. Again, I'm not concerned if it's 15 cities or streets or 50 or 500. I just want to know what my officers are doing.
Right.
Um, and so it's, it's a pretty simple calculus then at that point to understand where our cheapest miles are. Um, you know, I mean, I could make a case to go to seven cars, I could also show you how to do it with three or four cars, right? But it means maybe then, instead of doing a four-year turn at 49,500 miles, maybe with only three or four cars, we're actually doing a three-year turn to stay within that 49,500 miles. Well, now I'm still at the same price. So do we want four cars at the same price, turning them every three years, or do we want five cars, turning them every four years? And because of Dot, well, because of all of their warranty, I can feel comfortable as a company sharing that risk with you and sharing it with that, with that pool of cars. Saying 50,000 miles, frankly, we're not, we're not cutting edge here. Uh, Kansas State Patrol has been doing this program internally for 20 years. They've been miling out cars at 49,500 miles for a very long time. So we've taken what's very public knowledge and said, well, shoot, can we give this to our 700 agencies? Um, so that's kind of where we're at, but it is just spreadsheet calculus as far as how many miles times cars that you're using in a year, and then how do you want to buy those miles or those hours, basically? So, I, you know, when, when it comes to the number of vehicles, it can be kind of an art, and we can show a lot of analysis, there's a lot of time and that's why we're here on that, but at the end of the day, there's probably also some, some intrinsic reasons why we want five instead of four or six, things like that also, and you rely on your chief to make that case, so.
What's the rest of the council want to do? You want to, you want to get more information?
Well, uh, I think we need to do it. I don't know if we need five. I'd be inclined to do maybe four, but, um, Nate, are the guys taking the cars at home? Are they using these off-duty? Because I, I wouldn't approve of that at all.
So that's, no, they're not, they're not taking the cars home. Um, there is the other side to this with the MG90s that allows us to see exactly where they're at, at all times. I mean, the MG90s that are in the commobile routers, the Sierra Wireless MG90s of the brand, I can monitor every, the telemetry of every part of that car from the brake fluid level to where they drove, how fast they were driving.
Yeah, I, I think it's an excellent, excellent program. Um, I just, I'd be more inclined to go, as long as we have three, go to four rather than five, but, um
And honestly, if you're four, as Ryan said, you're paying the same price as five, so
But my question is, you know, let's get back to, you, did you just say that they are not going to be driving these cars home?
She asked if they were currently taking them home. I said, no, that'll be a policy decision that'll be made if and where they'll be stored. That'll be a policy decision by council at a later time.
Okay, so he's, he's, he's saying that if you go to four or if you go to five, it's a policy direction, he wants this council to visit, to authorize those cars going home, just like the chief's car.
I wouldn't agree with that.
Within a, within a certain radius, and the reason for that is callback, the primary reason for that is, is the officers being able to respond.
Yeah.
You're not responsible for their personal vehicle and assuring that they can get here safely and that, you're assuring that they're going to get here safely.
I mean, the cars are parked outside.
Right, but if you have the emergen, if, if there's an emergency at the school, for example, do you want them to have to come here first, start, find, get the car, get all their equipment in it, or would you rather have them be able to go directly to the scene of an incident and be there, I mean, seconds save lives, so what are minutes?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see an officer here in the office all the time, um, rather than have to call
That's a different discussion that I can show you some metrics on as well.
Have to call the county and try to raise somebody and, but
I think we need better communication.
Would anyone else like to discuss further?
I mean, the jump of three cars to five cars, if that's the only piece of information you're thinking about, sounds a little crazy, but the program as a whole, I think, makes a lot of sense, and I understand that the jump is, because that's, we're, we're putting those hours into our three cars and this would be just spreading those hours over five cars.
And taking them home. That's the second part of the equation, because you're going to be using them as an incentive tool to retain, that's what we said earlier.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with people having a take-home car.
So am I.
I'm not.
Why not? I mean, it's a sincere question Sylvia.
What's your problem with take-home cars?
I, I just, I just think that that's not the expectation. We're a community policing, there's no, there's no reason to be keeping a car.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it really would just be like, um, practically a convenience for the city, because then we don't have to pay to store them anywhere.
That what?
We don't have to pay to store them anywhere. You know, we don't, how many parking spots do we have right now?
Uh, we have, yeah, we have two out here that they allowed us to mark, so those two are essentially what we have. We park
Anyway, it would solve the problem of storage, to allow officers to take the car home.
Downstairs, we also have a third.
They did not give us a spot downstairs.
Whoa.
We, they can, we can have it if we pay for it, but commercial spots in this building do not get spaces downstairs. You have to pay for them.
Commercial do not.
Commercial do not. Residents upstairs do. We're welcome to pay for them if we want them, but we do not get one.
Well, unless I talked to them, they actually, it's, it wasn't guaranteed that we would get one if we wanted to pay for them, because it's something that could draw in people to buy the condos, is my understanding. I, I might be misunderstanding that, but, so we're not guaranteed, even if we want to pay for it, a spot below.
Hmm. Well, I'd, I'd need to see numbers in order to, to get a, a better sense of this. Otherwise, it's, like I said, it's a lot of information that's being dropped.
And I guess the last point that I wanted to make, my, my talks with Ryan, that he's willing to, in cooperation with me, do some, uh, if we can go forward with this project, they will, it's not a, we go forward and Kel-Tec says, great, thanks for the money, see you later. Uh, we can do some, whatever you want to call them, luncheon learns or workshops, that they can come back and present specific parts of how it's going to work going in the future. Um, as you said, though, with the other departments in a limited number, it's if we want to do it this year, pay more later.
I would vote to be a part of the pizza and the coffee. So I like them both.
We'll sign you up for that.
So what does council want to do with this?
I mean, it's really hard to make a decision without hard numbers, um, but I, I think it all makes a lot of sense, and it solves a lot of our problems that are otherwise going to take up a whole bunch of Nate's time or Chris's time or Steve Ballard's time.
We don't know that, though. I mean, we don't know how much time Steve has been spending on warranties or reading service contracts for any of this.
I can tell you that you've been down a car and lost hours for 12 and a half days this year, just on one of them.
So Brian, let me ask you a question. After this round, uh, when do you have new lines coming up available for your pool?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
After the, so you have a pool that's open, you have title available to 23 vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, I'm presuming that if by December 11th that closes, when's the next round? Because obviously, if this is a successful business model, you're probably going to be pursuing more pools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, good question. I don't know if I have that answer. Uh, probably, or probably ramp up for a July 1, uh, round then after that.
Do you think our cars can survive for July?
And I think, well, I was going to also say, maybe, maybe the process of what happens, if you greenlight, um, and I'm speaking a little out of turn here, but, um, if you greenlight something, that gives me enough to go back to say, hey, let's put some, uh, I'll put hard numbers down all day long, and I think maybe we are a little bit reversed tonight because of this timeline, and because I think there's some pain and we really want to see if there was an appetite here.
It's pressure.
Right, so, uh, and we would never want to, we'd never want to do it like that normally.
No.
But we're trying, we're trying to solve pain also, right? Um, um, but I think, you know, I'd just go back and say, we need to hold X amount of cars. So I don't, I don't know if I'll have success with that, but if the council says, yes, this is something we want to go forward with, I'll do what I can do. So, I mean, my CEO and founder of the company has a very good working relationship with chief, so, um, um, you know, that, that goes a lot, uh, in business. in business. What you'll see is hard numbers. This would be, this would be how that, it would normally go. You would see very hard numbers with a, with a contract that you guys would review, and then you'd say, yes, that makes sense, or it doesn't. And, and then whoever had the authority would sign the contract. So, it's not like this is gonna, if, if you were to green light this tonight, all of a sudden, five new cars show up in your driveway.
And it's not like.
So, then, then it really gives us some, then, yeah, then we get to work, basically.
Yeah, the green light doesn't mean, I, I'm not asking for a green light that, you know, Ryan and I sit down and try to get down to every penny of 90,000. It's a, those were estimates based on what he and I sat down and looked at and the technology issues that we have that we're trying to address. We think we can do it for that or less, was kind of the, you know, it's an up to amount. So, if there's, if the council approves an up to lower amount, we will, you know, we'll do our best to work with whatever we have to work with.
And everything's, everything's brand new, obviously, on these vehicles, but everything is also state contract. If you look at our list on our website, we hold state contract in the state of Iowa and a lot in Minnesota also, with almost every product that'll be inside this car. What that means for you is that it's a pre-negotiated rate with Iowa State Patrol, Iowa DOT, and Iowa DNR. You're just not going to get a better deal out there. So, these really are built from an economic standpoint and from your point of view, so.
So, after the council hears hard numbers, and there's a contract in front of them, they can say, you know what, we don't want to do this.
Yeah, you're just giving him the budget to go forward with this. What, what you guys decide as far as a purchase is still up to you. It really does have to be in the minutes of the council meeting.
Nick, do you want to make a motion?
I, well, I can, I'll make a motion.
Well, it's next committee.
To approve continuing negotiation, finding the hard numbers on the, on the proposal that Nate made this, this evening. And at the ti, at, at that time, when we receive the contract, we will vote on it and decide, you know, if there are any further decisions and look at the terms of the contract.
I second.
Okay, motion by Dottie and second by Sylvia. And this is with Caltech. Probably ought to add that. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Why are you, can you just say quickly, why are you named Caltech? I mean, isn't there a problem with that?
A problem with?
Well, I mean, it's.
It's the K.
In the middle of Iowa.
Yeah, California, Caltech.
Caltech, C-A-L.
C-A-L.
K-E-L-T-E.
Oh, this is K-E-L.
And it's really funny, because our.
It doesn't say anywhere.
About that. Our owner's name is Kelly.
Oh, well, you kept saying Caltech. Oh, you're saying Caltech.
Which is funny, because Caltech is with a K and a K, and there's a gun company with a C. So, I'll be on the street, they don't know what's a C, and people will go, I love your gun. All the time, I'm like, I don't.
All I ever talk about is colleges. I, I.
I have folders too, so I'll give you some information.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, is that everything with police?
Yep, I think we addressed everything other than, I mean, I just, quickly, JJ's, I had him fill out that accident interview. That is something that we're starting, that I would, you know, hopefully, nobody else leaves, that's the idea, but I want officers, as they depart, I want to try to make the department better for them.
Yeah, yeah.
And the opportunity for them to speak freely about why, why it is that they left and the ways that they think that we fall short. I think that only benefits the city and it only benefits us.
Yeah, I, I'd be very curious, because he's only been here a short time and.
That's included in my email, if you saw, the accident interview is, is a PDF scan in there, so.
Any other questions for police? Okay, we'll go on. Let's see, where are we? We'll go back to the legal report.
Okay. So, the item on the agenda is, is the resolution which approves the committee recommendation to go forward with the purchase agreements, sales agreements with Wagner Brothers Construction for 23 and 24 Olive Court. My report and the attachments, I hope, tried to detail the process that the committee took, described where we sent the RFPs and posted the RFPs and circulated them, the meetings that the committee had, and then the recommendations of the committee. So, that's the, the resolution that I drafted is the committee's recommendation.
Move it to option of 1856?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Virginia and a second by Nick to approve 1856.
Yeah.
Discussion.
It was the same group that got both, I don't know if you already said this, sorry. The same group that got both houses. Steve Gordon is a University Heights resident. He's remodeled a house in University Heights and now lives in it, and so I think.
He was here tonight.
He was here tonight until we went too late, and then he left. So, I think that kind of speaks a little to why he probably had the winning proposal, because he understands how to do this, and he understands our neighborhood and understands how to remodel old houses.
And I think he paid for his home like $250 or so, or at least the Johnson County Assessor's Office has it valued much higher than what he offered. So, I put together my thoughts on a presentation, so I'm going to ask if Chris Anderson can please open the PowerPoint presentation.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I've been having issues.
Sylvia, this isn't on the, your presentation isn't on the agenda.
No, it's a discussion. It's a discussion.
It's a discussion item.
But I'm, it's organized. My thoughts are organized in that discussion, because I knew it was going to run late.
Please start, and I'll have to catch up if I don't have any issues with your computer.
I don't actually, I don't have it.
You can, you can start speaking, can't you?
I can. Let's start.
Do I get to keep this? Do I get to keep this?
I don't know. I.
For a little bit? No?
There's six or seven of them.
Anyway. She's got one.
Okay, I've got it, but you let me know when you have it on your end.
Go ahead and start, and I'll be there in about a minute.
Okay. The, I'm going to give, you know, I'm, resolution 1856 presents an opportunity that needs to go on the record for discussing what the 2017 goals with two Olive Court houses were. And the global.
This is what you want?
Um, no, it's under 11 to 18. It says 11 to 18.
Keep going, please.
Yep, I will. The goals were revitalization, compliance, sustainability, and affordable housing. So, with revitalization, we put policy, not tax dollars, as our, as the 2017 council's primary goals. It was improving the stock of homes on Olive Court and increasing the number of owner-occupied homes. As, for, as an example, obviously, it's two less rentals that are now on Olive Court. The next thing that was a goal for 2017 was compliance. Making homes code compliant, no shortcuts on improvements. Significant improvements were going to be made on both homes, to the fact that one home's foundation was to be lifted and brought to prevailing 2018 standards. In addition to that, consider the fact that stairs are not ADA compliant. I mean, those stairs in both homes are not ADA compliant, and the 2017 goals was to make them compliant. Sustainability, the homes would be green homes. We would be taking climate action with respect to both of these homes. For example, solar panels were required on both homes, and both of them, high standards, had high standards of energy efficiency. So, we were, in 2017, as a council, with a four-to-one carry, we were dedicated to sustainability. And then finally, affordable housing. These houses were intended for buyers with household incomes of 40,000 to 80,000, certainly not 110,000. So, this is, this is for people with employment history who have decent but modest-paying jobs. So, those were the 2017 goals with the two Olive Court houses, where policy, not dollars, was a driver. So, I've compared it to what Steve Ballard circulated in his zip drive with all of the comparisons of bids and proposals that came through, in particular, the successful bidder, and it falls short. The bidding process falls short because it's a few dollars over big policy issues that are being, that are being left to the wayside. Revitalization, it's going to take 12 months or a little bit more before renovations end. End of 2019 is when this is supposed to be done and over with. And for all, for the types of descriptions that I saw in that bidder was budget-friendly fixes that fall short of those of the 2017 deal. So, I'm very, very concerned that revitalization of the stock of these homes is not being satisfied. Compliance, we're not getting as many items brought up to compliance as the 2017 deal did. And that's super, you know, it's the next page I'm over. It's, and that is, you know, 2017 deal had better compliance than the, the current proposal. And I'm super concerned that Steve Ballard's legal report says that we have yet to negotiate terms. I'm like, they should have put down the terms in their offer for the committee to have compared it fairly against all the other ones. Sustainability, there's no commitments on solar or geothermal resources on these property improvements. Again, it's short of the 2017 deal. And the last item is affordable housing. The bid, the bidders are business or partnerships. We only had one individual who made a proposal, and they were not the successful bidder. So, what's, you know, this partnership is doing exactly what normal businesses do, and that is maximize their profit. I mean, that's all they do. That, and that's fine for them. I'm really excited that, that they are maximizing their profit. But on, on that end, the city is losing on public policy. We're losing two homes that could be used to satisfy, as one of many other components, affordable housing commitments. So, the next one is the Olive Court houses, the location and location. It's huge. I mean, we are in a super desirable part of Johnson County, and it, and our prices show it. And our valuation and our assessments in the last four years reflect that. We are being priced based on location, location, location.
The lesson here is never, ever negotiate a deal that involves paying twice assessed value for houses, and you get the houses. Next time, take the money.
No.
I agree with that. We're saddled with two houses that we have to do something about, and now all we're doing is arguing and arguing and arguing what to do.
No, you know what? We weren't. In April, the mayor and Virginia had a conversation with the, with the group.
We've been through this before, Sylvia, and they backed out because you were difficult.
No, they backed out because you were easy to work with, Lisa. That's why they had your vote. So, the point being that developers paid 375,000, and the bidders are offering 140. Take a look at the huge price differential. The, the second home onto the right was cost us 400, or cost the developers 400, and the bid, the bidders are offering 110. So, the point is that we have other alternatives. Right now, those dollars don't look all that great. We can either do a 2019 win-win alternative that this council can look into, despite the fact that, you know, people were here tonight. We can take either the most dollars. I think we need to sell these houses in the spring of 2019, but we need to list them in the MLS for top dollar. That's where people go to look for houses. Whether or not the, or the agencies that Steve Ballard forwarded the proposals to, did their job, then forwarded along, et cetera, who knows? But the point is that we need to get either most dollars or most policy out of this transaction. We've got to work to get sustainability. I mean, we can't be asking and fighting to over sustainability with this professor that came to visit tonight and yet skip on the two most tangible, you know, opportunities that we have now, and that's these two houses. Affordable housing also needs our assistance. If you're committed to affordable housing where the real need is needed, then don't give it lip service. Give it affordable housing assistance by making these homes, working with a reputable, independent organization, let's, let's deliver on affordable housing to make, you know, this a public policy that we can be proud of. Now, the most policy means that we make meaningful upgrades. We don't, you know, I saw the upgrades that were being provided, and they really do fall short of the 2017 list of upgrades that, that were proposed in 2017. So, I'm not too sure that I'm, 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 I'm super thrilled about, you know, the upgrades. Sustainable actions, well, if climate is really a, a need and an urgency, let's behave like it is and make these houses subject to sustainable actions. And then, of course, it's affordable housing, don't pay it lip service. I say, do what you need to do as a community to make your contribution a firm one. And then, of course, let's talk about what you're all going to do with this resolution. And that's, you're going to generate cash. Where is it going to go? It needs to go back into Olive Court. Because it, you know, as far as I'm concerned, Olive Court is ground zero for any, any effects from a hotel that's nearby. These neighbors deserve, from this council, the 2018, 2019 council, to make their street a top public policy priority. And that is exactly what the 2017 council intended by bringing those two homes, having them refurbished by an organization that know, that knew how to put together the refurbishing, and more importantly, knew how to sell these homes to owner-occupied people who would be able to carry a mortgage for as long as they needed to in, in these very desirable homes. For example, Virginia and Lisa and Nick and Dottie, we need to reinvest 100% of the proceeds from, of these house, from the sale of these houses back into Olive Court. It can't be going off to Ridgeview, it can't be going off to Cosier, it needs to go to Olive Court. These are our neighbors that are, that are on ground zero, and they deserve our top policy support. The second one is streets and sidewalk improvements in Olive Court. We need to carry that through and finish it off. And the next one is homeowner incentives to revitalize properties on Olive Court. I understand that Erica Schultz was part of this committee. I think Erica and her neighbors should be incentivized with some of this money going back in so that they too can experience some, you know, cash out of this transaction, so it just doesn't disappear. And, and the way they should do it is by owner, owner incentive revitalization programs. And then, of course, let's continue to monitor the, the rentals on the street. But the way I look at it is that there's no need to be voting for this resolution, because we have time. We have more than 12 months, because that's what the proposal says, that they're going to be able to complete improvements in a little over 12 months. Okay, fine, well that means the city can probably sell this in the next five months when spring comes around and make, make use of its policy prerogatives in order to drive that sale. That's why it's important that the MLS be used. I, I don't know why the MLS was not used, but I'm sure there's a, there's a good explanation for that. And more importantly, let's not pass up on the opportunity to make a, a good public policy statement. I think we're shortchanging a lot of important policy areas in University Heights, and we need to put a stop to that and, and be behind it and go forward. I mean, we're, we're going to have to sell these homes, but let's get the best policy position out of it. And the way I look at it is this resolution doesn't accomplish that by awarding it tonight for such low value and for improvements that are, that are yet to be negotiated. I, I was surprised to see that that's not locked down by now. So, those are my public comments on this resolution.
Consideration of resolution number 1856 is before you. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I already.
There was a motion and a second.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, good. We already have a motion.
And a second.
And who's that? Who did it?
I seconded.
Virginia and Nick.
Okay, I kind of, I don't know if I remember that or not. Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Herbold?
Aye.
Maher?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Posada?
No.
Carrie, 3-2.
And I'd just like to comment, the reason I voted no is that I was not pleased with the projected changes. I've been through these houses with Jim Glasgow, and there's, there was just a plethora of things that needed to be done in order to make it livable. And I was especially concerned with all the stairs and the steps and the non, non-ADA compliance. So, I, I don't like the changes that they have recommended, and that's why I voted against.
Okay. We'll go on to the clerk report.
Well, since we're at such a late hour, you all have received my updated building and rental permit spreadsheets, my clerk's report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to chat with you after the meeting.
Okay, we have treasurer's report and payment of the bills. They've been sent by Lori. Are there any objections to pay in the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. And then.
Since we're under the treasury report, I need to bring up a treasury action, which is reinvest, uh, re, proceeding with the investment of the June, of the June CD, I think, for 50,000 or so. I don't have the documents here, but maybe Lori, I think you've been waiting for this one. We had, council agreed to reinvest that CD in.
Oh, right.
In another institution, UIHCC, I believe is the name, but you all know I get those wrong, so. So, what happened is there was some technical execution on making that happen, and the money was parked in a savings account. And in the course of doing the research for last week's CD. for last week's CD investment, it was brought to my attention that it's still in a savings account. So I am bringing this up to council because our policy manual requires that treasurer actions be voted on. So if you all agree to vote, I'd like to see that money reinvested, actually, with a shorter-duration CD for the amount and with a higher interest rate. So no harm, no foul for the non-follow-up of the investment thing.
Oh, and that was voted for Hills Bank.
That was only for Hills Bank, but it was for the $27,000.
Right.
But this is a $50,000 CD that was supposed to have gotten invested, what, in June, July? And I think that one with the good, best rate for that was Collins Community Center for, I think, I can't remember. So...
Do you have it, Lori?
No, I have to look at my emails. So we need to, right now, that money is sitting with Collins Community Credit Union, and it needs to go into their, I think, their mid-range CD that has a three-point-something rate of return. So I wanted to ask council to allow the treasurer, which is Lori, to complete that reinvestment and still with the same institution, Collins Community Credit Union, for, I think it was a bid amount of three-point-something. Well, I told you we were going to bring this up because it required... Yeah, otherwise, it'll just have to wait until December to get accomplished. Because I can't find my information right now.
Okay.
All right?
Well, you keep looking and we'll move on a little bit.
Yeah, let's do that.
And then, so now we'll go to, back to building, zoning, and sanitation. And we have, you sent around your report. And one of the things you talked about was third consideration of the ordinance number 233.
Yep, I'll try to keep this brief, but we do have some things to talk about here. Motion adoption ordinance 233, third consideration.
Second.
Okay, motion by Virginia. I'm going to remember this one. And second by Nick. Okay, discussion. Roll call vote.
Which, what is it? I don't have it in front of me.
It's the Airbnb prohibiting short-term rental of property, sorry.
And Dottie, I'm starting with you. Maher?
Yes.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Carrie?
Now, just a piece of news for council. Our friend Brian Los of 214 Gulfview Airbnb was recently elected to the Iowa House in the District of Bondurant. You'll, as a Republican, you'll recall that the Republicans in their last session took away our ability to restrict residential rentals to family members plus one. So it would not surprise me at all if in this session, they eliminate local control over Airbnbs.
Great.
We'll see. I included in my report a list of recommendations for how we change the rental permit renewal process for next year. I'm really not interested in going through those line by line tonight. I hope you will read them and provide comment back to me if you disagree with any of them. None of these require a change to the ordinance. I've scheduled Mark Vitash to come out for another round of tree risk assessments in June 2019 for the periphery of the Swisher Tract. Hazardous trees are defined by whether or not there is a target within striking distance. So the interior of the Swisher Tract is no concern to us unless we put in a hiking trail, in which case, we need to assess the areas adjacent to the hiking trail. So if we end up proceeding with that, we'll want to get back in touch with him to see if we can add that on. But for now, we need to only be concerned with the people and property and the areas of the map that I included in my report. So that'll be done in June 2019.
So who's going to do that?
Mark Vitash.
Okay.
Leaf vacuuming is still ongoing. They were supposed to come finish up today, but the truck broke in the afternoon, so they still have a portion left to do.
I have a question. Do they have, like, a suctioning arm on that truck? Or... Why is it taking so long?
They're new at this? I don't know. It's not going that well, though.
No, it's not. Have you noticed how many people are...
We may not want to use them again next year. We'll see.
Have you noticed how many people are raking their leaves into the street? I mean, completely into the street.
Yeah, and they're not really picking things up out of the street the way Johnson County refuse used to, not to the same degree at all. So another round starts next week on Monday. Hopefully, they'll get that done before Thanksgiving and before the Iowa game on Friday this time. But we're certainly not committed to using them in future years if we are not happy with our experience this year.
Well, let's see how it goes.
Though, there's not, like, a ton of options, just FYI, you know? We got two options this year. We might have three next year.
It's not environmentally sound, anyway.
Oh, really? Yeah. I sent around a summary of my discussions on Swisher Tract as follow-up from last week. There's no action for us to do on that. I still think it's probably a good idea for us to keep Swisher discussions segregated to a special meeting because we seem to get better turnout for it. We seem to be able to have better discussions for it. And then, lastly, we've got a couple of openings on the tree board. So please tell folks, if they're interested in serving on that, to send perhaps a paragraph of their skills and experiences to Louise. The end.
Are there any questions? Thank you for doing that. And we'll go to Sylvia.
All right, I found the email, thanks to Lori. She forwarded that to me. It is with Collins Credit Union, and the proposed time or duration would be 17 months, which is a change from, I think it was almost 30 months, the initial proposal. But the rate of interest is pretty high. It's 2.71%, which is better than the prior version, which was at 2.6%. So we're getting a tenth of a percent higher. So, and it's a shorter duration, higher rate, and this still serves the liquidity purposes of staggering payments from these CDs to get renewed every so often. So as opposed to clustering them all in one year. So if Lori can get authorization for this, I'd like to motion that she be authorized to pursue with this. And is there a second?
2.71%.
No, that's the interest I need.
Yeah. The amount does...
Oh, $50,000, you said.
Hold on. Hold on, I have it here.
Is there a second?
Quarter, yeah, you're right.
Dottie seconded it. Any further discussion, clarification needed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Then you want to go with your resolution.
And then there's resolution adoption of the annual financial report that Steve called prepared by motion adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Sylvia, second by Virginia.
Steve provided everyone with care data, and I understand some folks reached out to him. So I think if you have any other questions, share them now or let's get them to vote.
Roll call vote.
Moore?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Excuse me, Casada?
Aye.[1734.96]